Evening, everyone. I'll call to order our Vada City Council workshop for October 9th, 2017. We've got three items that we're going to be working on tonight. The first is the Reno Park Design Guidelines. Mr. Davenport, you want to lead us off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're going to have Rita McConnell make some comments and then we'll go into the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. The Reno Park neighborhood is recognized as a place of distinction in the city of Arvada for its historical value. It has been listed on the National Register of Historic Places since 1999. The city only has two historic residential neighborhoods, Reno Park and the Stocky Walter Neighborhood. In 2015, a petition was circulated among owners of 55 of the homes in the Reno Park District that were zoned RM. Forty-five or eighty-five percent of those were supportive of rezoning these properties. Eight of them could not be located and two were against it. According to the neighbors who participated in this effort, the zoning change was provided in an effort to protect out-of-scale development as well as preserve one of the oldest neighborhoods in Arvada. At the time of this zoning change, it was discussed that zoning would not be enough to protect the character of the area. Council did request that staff consider Design Guidelines as a means of helping fulfill this desire of these residents to have greater control other than zoning and protecting this neighborhood character. Right now, there are 83 structures in the Design Guideline project area. There are more structures in the affected area of the Design Guidelines because the Reno Park District is larger than the area that needed to be rezoned. Staff, the consultants, who is a recognized expert in historic Design Guidelines, and key participants from the neighborhood have worked on the development of these Design Guidelines since 2016. Notices for participation in the Design Guidelines were sent to over 400 people on seven different occasions for either the community or the City Council workshops. Links were also provided to this Reno Park website that provided a lot of information on this project. Out of all these notices, we did have a core group of about 34 people who attended the four community meetings throughout the process. We believe that the people who have been interested in the outcome of the Design Guidelines have had the opportunity and have participated in this process. The meetings worked on the principle of consensus decision-making. The consensus was for advisory guidelines with a select number of priority guidelines for those areas that dealt with mass scale and bulk. At this point, staff believes that there are three remaining priority guidelines that need to be resolved based upon the last workshop held with City Council. Our presentation will focus on this assumption with the understanding that we need this direction to move forward with final product and under the timelines imposed by the grant that we received to fund this effort. If City Council agrees with this conclusion and that Reno Park is unique, then priority guidelines are important to ensure the character of the area. And that those priority guidelines would be administered by staff. If they are advisory Design Guidelines, they are just administered by the people who read those guidelines. Of note, Reno Park only contains 17 acres. The city has over 16,000 acres of land, so residential, that can accommodate a wide range of housing types. So we are talking about a unique area with limited application that if council agrees is important, it would be important to do as a priority guideline for specific guidelines. I will now hand it over to Cheryl Drake, the Senior Planner and the Project Manager, to initiate this presentation.
Thank you.
Evening, Cheryl.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us your time this evening. Rita's -- is this not on? Maybe you can do advanced one for me. You've heard at our last workshop a lot of the history behind the project, so I won't go into a lot of that here. And Rita's also provided great background on the project. Let me just go into what the purpose of the workshop is tonight. When we discussed this at our last workshop in August, we felt that we got good direction from council on those priority Design Guidelines that we thought were necessary in order to preserve the character of the area. However, there were three guidelines and it seemed like that there was additional discussion that would be -- we would benefit from that discussion. So we're here tonight to talk about those three guidelines. And of course, if you've got questions on any of the others, we're happy to answer those. But we'd like to get some direction from council tonight so that we can move forward, prepare that final draft, and bring it back to you for adoption.
And that'll be at a public hearing, correct?
That will be at a public hearing, correct.
And we'll take testimony at that time when we have our public hearing on folks' views of what we finally have put before them.
Absolutely. So now I'd like to introduce Norrie Winter from Winter Consultants, who will walk us through our presentation and hopefully we'll get this thing working. There we go.
Remind me which button does what?
Down, get down goes.
Yes?
It's not, it's not working. There we go, there we go.
Next line, okay, all right. As Cheryl mentioned, the discussion tonight focuses on these three guidelines, and they are interrelated because they all revolve around the policy about the perception of mass and scale as seen from the street. We had some discussions about that last time. The draft guidelines, as they exist right now, focus on maintaining the traditional one- and one-and-a-half-story scale in the first 20 feet of building area. And that relates to all three of these areas of discussion. In essence, should council direct to permit two stories and change the scale at the street front setback, then that causes a ripple effect to all three of these standards. But I'll go through them individually, and we'll go through them in the numerical order. So the first one is about additions. The next one is about the scale of new buildings, and then a related one is about dormers. Because if the policy is to maintain a one-one-and-a-half-story scale along the street, then the proportion and location of dormers is relevant. If the direction is to permit a full two stories, then it's not relevant. So, to remind you, Design Priority Guideline 255 says that a new addition should respect the mass and scale of the neighborhood and set some limits for additions. Option one is as drafted and proposed by staff, and that is to limit one-story construction. The other option, which has been put forward as an alternative, is to, in fact, permit a full two stories within that first 20 feet. And again, remember, there also was a survey that was conducted early in this process that was reported to you earlier, in which about two-thirds of the residents expressed an interest in maintaining the traditional character and scale of the neighborhood. The specific guideline is highlighted here as the portion of setting back, and there are some dimensional standards provided. Now, for additions, there are a variety of options that are illustrated in the guidelines to illustrate ways of flexibly meeting different design programs and objectives. And they address additions with connectors, without a connector, as we call it, whether there are a one-story addition or a two-story addition or a combination. Some of those have some dimensional standards related to them, and some people may have gotten confused about how you apply different dimensional standards. The charts are pretty specific about how they relate, and I'll go over those in a moment. There is a fundamental question about where a two-story might be permitted. While the general policy is to discourage height and scale in the front 20 feet, there are some historic precedents of two-story buildings in that front setback. And they're shown on this map, and there's a small area that is outlined where, because of the existing context of historic two-story buildings, it would be compatible to have a full two-story building within that. Otherwise, throughout this entire area, what we're calling defining as a one-and-a-half story building is permitted at the minimum setback. And we'll look at those illustrations again shortly. I want to just quickly point out the three of the pages that illustrate the design options for additions. And several of them are relevant and don't have any dimensional restrictions. If you look at the example here of number two, this one just with an addition for a one-story building can extend back without limit. The main objective here is to maintain the corners of the original building so you see its original scale and character. So for one-story buildings, there really aren't many dimensional limits within certain constraints. The next one illustrates scenarios where two-story additions might occur, and those vary depending on proportion. And again, the important consideration here is that they stay visually subordinate to the primary one-story form that's in front. And so some of these, like the top one, focus on maintaining those corners so you see the original scale of the building. Item, option number five, though, does provide some dimensional limits. And so sometimes that one would apply depending on the circumstances. But again, there are a variety of options that are set forward. There then are some that are a combination, we're calling them. That is where a portion of an addition goes over the roof of the existing building and then extends to the rear and/or to the side of a building. These are more sensitive in the way that they change the scale and character of the original building and of the street, and so more specific dimensional standards are included for this type of an addition. So it's important to keep those distinctions in mind. Let's see, oops, heading in the wrong direction. Now, the similar policy for 4.8 relates to a new building. And again, the proposed priority guideline is that that one-and-a-half-story limit be in place for the first 20 feet from the front setback, and beyond that, then a full two stories permitted, except where there are those contextual conditions where a full two-story building would be allowed. But the other option, again, based on your direction, would be to say, no, that the change in scale can occur and a full two-story scale of the street would be appropriate. The specific guideline is illustrated here with some dimensional limitations about scale and proportion of that front setback. And you see one design solution that models that kind of a form where there's a one-story element in front and a full two-story element that's set back 20 feet. To reiterate the definitions of one, one-and-a-half, and two-story buildings, there are these illustrations. We'll just look at them again quickly because I think some people think that if there's a second floor, it's a two-story building. But as we've defined it, a full two-story building is one in which the full headroom of the second floor is below the roof eaves, below the rafters. And so those are the limitations. But there are many, many buildings that are the second image here that we would call one-and-a-half story in a variety of forms that do, in fact, have a second floor that is occupied. So what might this look like with implementation of the two alternatives that are being discussed for additions and for new construction? This is a prototypical block in the district with buildings that are representative of those within the district. Many of them are, let's see if I can get the pointer, many of them are just one-story buildings. Some are one-and-a-half-story buildings. It doesn't work, okay. Some, most have gables that are perpendicular to the street, but some are parallel to the street. And there are a few two-story buildings. There's one up in the upper left, third down. If the one-and-a-half-story policy were implemented and we assumed a certain degree of replacement and additions, this would be the way in which the one-and-a-half-story policy in front would help to maintain scale. It is changing, but it is maintaining that character along the street. This is a scenario in which if the full two-story in front policy were in place with just three of the original buildings in the middle there and one on the end being retained, and the impact or the scale and character that would, that those who have chosen to keep their historic, original buildings in place would be feeling in terms of the scale of development around them. To help maybe compare it, we put all three of those together, parallel here, so you could see the potential alternatives between existing condition, a policy of one-and-a-half stories in the first 20 feet, and a policy of two full stories in the first 20 feet, and how that might affect the scale and character of this small district. And then finally, an illustration that kind of superimposes the two. The blue transparent envelope is the equivalent of the two-story scenario you just saw, superimposed over the existing character of the street. So you can see the potential change in scale, and then the elevation of the block is shown here and outlined at the bottom to help you see what the potential impacts of that policy would be on the street. Finally, is the related one about dormers. And again, this is to help maintain that scale at the street level. So if the one-and-a-half-story policy were to be in place, then the guideline is drafted, which sets some proportional dimensional limits on dormers would be in place. If the policy directive is to go to a full two stories, then that would no longer be operable. This is that guideline, though, and it has some specific dimensions that are set there. And those are based on historical dimensions and a study of what looks to be compatible in the neighborhood. Now, again, this could be one, though, where we'll be discussing waivers briefly, where a waiver in terms of dimensions of a dormer certainly could be entertained if indeed the overall character of the scale of the street would still be maintained. So that leads us to three case studies that we developed to illustrate what opportunities are in some cases in response to concerns that there were some constraints in the guidelines. And so one of them has an addition on a relatively small home on a standard lot. Another one is a building on a constrained lot that is smaller in size than is typical. And then one that is on a corner lot that raises questions of what's the front of the building? So we wanted to just show you those because this is, in some cases, how the by right, if you will, interpretation could apply, but in other cases, how the director could determine that a waiver would be appropriate. So one is a case study at 5702 Zephyr, and this is on a typical lot, 50 by 125 feet, with a 17% lot coverage, and the historic structure is a rectangular structure with a wing out the back. According to the Design Guidelines, an addition of this scale would be, of a two-story, would be permitted based on the proportional interpretation of those model illustrations for additions that I showed you earlier. This would permit an increase in over 700 square feet, yielding about a 1,600 square foot house. Note that if indeed one wanted to go with a one-story addition, you wouldn't even have the limitation that this has in terms of a sidewall length. If one said, I'd need a bigger addition, two stories, up closer to the house because I want to maintain the rear yard, then in that case, a waiver might be entertained. And the waiver here is on the length of the sidewall of the addition. The consideration here is that the primary structure still remains visible from the street, the traditional scale of the one-story structure would still be the predominant form. The second scenario is one in which the house is turned 90 degrees. The ridge line is parallel to the street. These have different kinds of constraints in terms of one's ability to build an addition. And this also has a small existing portion that extends out into the rear yard. It is constrained in that it's a smaller lot, and it's actually even got an angle to the rear yard, which constrains the rear yard to some extent. Again, according to the guidelines, one could do an addition of this size without requiring a waiver, and this is increasing the house by about 400 square feet. But again, if the consideration is because of how they plan, wanting to use their yard or the floor plan of the house, they wanted an addition that is more, is closer up to the back wall of the house, this would require a waiver. And again, the consideration is that because it is set back from the corners of the house, it's easy to see the original scale of the original building, and that proportion would still be appropriate. So that is a waiver option showing an increase of approximately the same amount of square footage, but in a different configuration. Finally, is the one where the building is on a corner, and it's a question of, well, what is the front in these situations? And that is a constraint, but it's also an interesting opportunity. If you interpret 57th Street as the front, then the ability to add on to the rear is very limited. So this is a case where interpreting the Zephyr Street side as the front then opens up some options. And in this case, there would be a waiver about permitting that to be considered the front of the building. Note that this addition still is set back even from the front of the 57th Street side, but more in compliance with what an addition, a rule for a side addition would be. And so still, the overall form of the original building, really from Zephyr and from 57th Street, would still be perceptible. So that is an option for that. So those are three examples of the kinds of waivers. And again, using those in combination with the illustrations that already illustrate a variety of form options, there's a fair amount of flexibility that's built into the way in which these guidelines could be applied. Some of those are repeated here, but there are also a couple of other potential constraints. One is, a building exists right now that is closer to a side yard setback than the current code. And yet, it makes sense to extend an addition in line with that sidewall. And so one waiver would be that that potential, for example, is at three feet rather than five feet. And for whatever reason, it makes sense to extend that wall on out for the addition to the rear. So those kinds of conditions often occur in these kinds of situations, and that could be another condition for a waiver. The condition of the building could be a consideration for a waiver as well. It might be that one portion is so unsound that it needs to be removed, and that would change the proportional ratios. And yet, the original form was larger before that was removed. And so those are situations where flexibility in the interpretation through the waiver process would be appropriate. So those are the highlights we wanted to show you of the policy question related to the scale of building in front and the potential impacts they would have on development. And at this point, the schedule is as tensively as is scheduled up front. And Cheryl, if there's anything more you want to say about that?
That's about it. We hope to bring back the final document to you on November 20th for that public hearing. And then immediately follow that up with the revisions that are necessary to the Land Development Code in order to implement those, with a planning question hearing on December 5th and a City Council hearing in February of next year. And we're here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, all open up for council questions. Mr. Mayor, your first.
Thank you. Cheryl, I have a question for you. So this is the first time we've seen this concept of waivers. What is you guys' vision of waivers? Is that something that would be granted by the staff? And is there, I guess, some kind of, what would be the thought process for how the staff would decide whether to grant a waiver or not?
So the approach that we've been taking with these guidelines is similar to those that we use in Old Town, where we have waivers for those guidelines as well. In that case, there is the option to refer to the Design Review Advisory Committee, who then makes a recommendation back to the Community Development Director, and then she makes the final determination. So ultimately, even in Old Town, waivers are granted by the Community Development Director. In this case, we're just anticipating that in order to make the process less cumbersome, that we eliminate the Design Review Advisory portion of it. So all the review would be done administratively with final action by the Community Development Director, and she could make those waivers. In the Old Town Design Guidelines, we've implemented those by adopting criteria. There are four criteria contained within the Land Development Code. And one of those needs to be found to be appropriate in order for the Community Development Director to actually grant the waiver.
Can you tell me kind of what those, what one or more of those four things might be? In other words, you know, to have a waiver process changes this whole program a little bit in some way of us having some idea, what might that look like? If I go in to say, I want to put an addition on my house, and, you know, I can't quite fit this, I'd like a waiver, how do you know whether to say yes or no?
Well, the criteria that we use in Old Town have to do with not impacting the historic character of a structure, not impacting the historic character of the actual district itself. I'm forgetting the third one, but I believe the fourth one has to do with economic situation. So that if it's extraordinarily expensive to proceed with a design that would meet the guidelines, you might waive a guideline. And basically, we evaluate those to determine if we think that the concept is in keeping with the character of the district. And in this case, we would do that as well. We would look at those priority guidelines. And in Old Town, we don't have the numeric standards that we have with our guidelines here, but we've included those at the request of the community. So there's a little more rigidity to it. But we would, again, we would look at those and make sure that there is a hardship of sorts. For example, those corner lots, the small lots, the ridge line that runs parallel to the street, and that sort of thing.
Let me give you an example, and tell me whether you think this would be a case for a waiver. Say I have one of these smaller houses there in Reno Park, and I want to put an addition off to the side. And I think the Design Guidelines require an addition off to the side to be set back 20 feet.
Again, it depends. I mean, that addition, if it's a two-story addition--
Might not be available at all.
Well, if it's within the context of a two-story development, then yes, it would be. If it's not within that context, which is one of the examples that we saw here, which was the 7899, I believe, or was it the 5702? I can't remember. One of those, 5702. I think it was 5702. It's not within that area that the two-story context was appropriate, but because of the sidewall of that historic structure being so short, it was appropriate to allow a larger two-story addition.
The guidelines are structured specifically with this kind of a situation in mind. I just, this one is one that happens to be out in the presentation that I can go back to. But in each case, there is an intent in the actual guideline, 4.8. It says, "Design a new residential building to incorporate heights and proportions that reference those of historic buildings in the surrounding context." Now, the subsequent bullets provide those dimensional standards. How would the director determine if there's flexibility for a waiver there? They would say, it still meets the intent. Say you want to adjust one of these numbers. Instead of 20 feet, it's 19 feet. They would look to see, does that still appear to be in proportion? And is it meeting the intent of the primary guideline number that's here in boldface? So there's a hierarchical structure for making that kind of determination. It's not saying, oh, this one doesn't apply to you. It's saying, yes, you meet it in a different way, and it's in proportion, and it's in scale or whatever. So that hierarchical structure is set up throughout all of the priority guidelines to provide that kind of basis for a rational decision for a waiver.
Let me ask you, Mr. Winter, a question about one of the things that I've been really struggling with with these, some of these guidelines is that if I've got one of these houses and I'd like to, you know, it's 700 square feet, or 800 square feet, or 900 square feet, something small, and I would like to expand it maybe to more kind of a what you might expect for size of houses these days, and put an addition on there. And it's difficult to do. Do you have any fear that these guidelines just really encourage me as a property owner to go just remove that house and start over? In other words, that the constraints of some of these dimensions and stuff in here might really just encourage me to, rather than keep that original house, to just say, well, I can't do that easily.
No, I don't think that's true.
I think I just get rid of it, you know?
And in fact, it was interesting, when we were running through the waiver scenarios, as we looked back at all the options that were offered, generally, there was a by right, if you will, option that was available even without a waiver. And so we, in several cases, said, well, we said we'd do a waiver for this one, but we are actually know we can do a by right solution for that addition. So I think in all of the cases we looked at, there were at least two or three different options. Some by right within the dimensional standards outlined, and others that are available through the waiver process, but still meeting the primary intent of keeping the scale of the street level.
Go back to your, on your presentation, those case studies, maybe that first one, I think. Because I think that one provides a good example, maybe.
Huh? No, I think I'm going to, there we go. This one?
Yeah, that one. So then, an addition there. So that's a, that's an addition that you look at as a two-story addition, 16 by 24, to try to do that. And that would be-- And that would be a buy right, correct? You could do that by right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. If you were trying to not do a two-story addition, do you have other options besides just half of that?
Oh, a one-story addition can extend out quite a bit.
You're then only limited by lot coverage?
You're only limited by lot coverage.
By lot coverage and setbacks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Go to the next one of your case studies, not that one. This one is, I thought, an interesting one, where you're adding, you know, a two, again, looking at it as a two-story addition. So you're adding 400 square feet to a one-story home in the form of a two-story addition. And it looks to me like, you know, I think we've seen this example before of practicality might tell me, I'd almost rather have that be just a two-story addition over the main structure instead of covering more ground. That'll be decided on whether we decide to allow only one and a half stories or two stories. Is that correct?
That's right. That's right. There would be options of adding dormers to the front of that, but that would give you a one and a half story space within the realm of the guidelines.
Right. And if you wanted to take the roof off of it and add, you know, four-foot walls, and then put a roof pitch back on it, and kind of make it from a one-story into a one and a half story, any idea on a footprint of that size, kind of a 20 by, I don't know what that is, 20 by 30 footprint? How much space can you actually gain doing it that way?
No, I haven't. I'd have to work.
You hadn't looked at?
No.
Okay. Okay. Well, let me ask one other thing. So it seems like, as I've talked to many, many different residents here in Reno Park, the consistent theme seems to be that proportion and scale, height is an issue. Number of stories doesn't seem to be as much of an issue, but its height seems to be an issue. Is there a simpler way to get to things like height with just a height limit as opposed to... It seems like, you know, there are height limits kind of within these guidelines based on, you know, required roof pitches and sizes that things can be, which yield certain roof heights. But is there a simpler way of doing it than kind of having it embedded within these, you know, interconnected kind of regulations?
It's simpler, but more restrictive. You could establish a building envelope that limits the building to one and a half stories throughout the lot. And that would maintain the one and a half story scale. What this approach does is maintain the one and a half stories at the street level, and then permit more building volume farther into the lot.
Farther in. Or if you permitted two-story structures, but limited the roof height to be no higher than a one and a half story structure is, I mean, that's kind of the connection I'm looking for, is there a way of...
But that would be more limiting throughout the site, if you're going to limit it to one and a half stories, unless you're going to allow a one and a half story limit and try it on two, four.
Well, I was saying, you allow two stories everywhere. You know, my talks with the residents has been, they're more concerned with the overall height, mass, and scale of what's there. But they're maybe not as concerned about how that's distributed. In other words, whether that's a one and a half story. And some of the ones, as we took our walking tour, you know, some of the one and a half stories, which were a little bit hard to define in places, were as big as some of the ones over two stories. You know, there wasn't a vast difference. But that seemed to be the more important thing for people, wasn't the number of stories.
There is a plate height, there is a wall height limit for the first and second floors that's in the guidelines.
For two-story construction.
Well, yeah.
And there's one that defines a one and a half story construction.
Yeah, about what it is. And it seemed to me that there's a number of those houses that kind of fall in between there, where the sidewalls and the one and a half story are more than four feet. They're, you know, they're six feet or something, and it's hard to classify what they are. Okay, you know, I think that's maybe the questions I have at the moment. I want to listen to what my fellow council members have to ask, and I might have a couple more.
Yeah, I'll open it up for other questions. I did want to note, I see several members of the Planning Commission here. I appreciate you all being here tonight to hear this too, because it'll be important for your considerations as well. So I appreciate you guys taking the, you all, taking the time to think about this. One question I have before, and I might even direct it to Mr. Marriott and staff, in terms of, is there any thought that instead of a waiver program, that it'd be more appropriate for the Board of Adjustment to deal with these kind of issues? Or is that beyond their purview? Or is it something that would make sense for the Board of Adjustment?
Right now, the way that we have design guidelines handled in Old Town is that we have that administrative decision. Any appeal to that administrative decision actually goes to our Planning Commission, who's more accustomed to dealing sort of with these sorts of design issues. So that same philosophy would apply here.
So the waiver would be appealable to the Planning Commission?
Any decision, any decision on one of these would be appealable to the Planning Commission.
But this is a more streamlined approach than having to go through...
Correct. You don't have the public notice and, you know, the time involved in a Board of Adjustment hearing.
Okay. Mark McGough.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions related to the two-story buildings. The first is, if we were to give direction to pursue option two for unlimited two-story construction, would that ever give way to the possibility of having three-story construction? Would this be a maximum? Or could there, if there were unlimited two-story, could there also be three-story?
It would be within the existing height limits.
It would be within the existing height limits.
And it is possible to do two plus dormers?
Two plus dormers.
Easily, yeah.
So it would not necessarily be limited to just two stories if we gave direction for option two.
Right.
Okay. The other question about two-story is, I understand that there, and I'll just confirm this, that there are three contributing two-story homes within the district. And that if we dealt with allowing additional two-story homes in context, proximity to the existing two-story homes, there could be eight more? Is that...
That is the context that we've proposed.
Okay, that, okay. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Folks, you're sitting back on this one tonight. Go ahead, John. I have just a quick follow-up on what Mr. McGough asked, and I think you have a slide of it that shows the two-story contributing structures within the district. But it said there's eight possibilities of where two-story homes can be, could be built based on the historic context. But isn't, aren't three of them or something like that are contained within a single lot where there's already a house? In reality, there's five, maybe, four or five?
I mean, we look at it from the ultimate potential, and ultimately, those two lots could be developed as two-story single-family homes.
Right. But that's a house that's three lots or four lots big, kind of all now.
It's, it has accessory structures on the adjacent lots.
Right. So for that to happen, though, somebody'd have to take the accessory structures off, sub them, or replat the lots, or...
They don't have to replat them, they just have to remove the accessory structures.
And then build new...
Just as someone might scrape a home here and rebuild.
New houses, okay. Sounds good. For those of you, the one, the house that we're talking about is Ursetta's house on the corner of Zephyr and Grandview, which is the gambrel roof with the big garage. That house sits on four lots. So while that house is a contributing two-story one, you could build more two-story houses there by building them next to that one. And that would be, I think, three of those eight options that if you take those three is mostly impractical. The other options are, I think there's four or five other options for two-story houses to be built.
Let's go on that, just from my understanding. So you can only build a two-story, I'm looking to John on this, but the two-story can only be done to contributing houses, right? Or structures, not contributing?
So what we've proposed is that two-story construction would be allowed within that front 20 feet, where you're in the context of two-story construction. And that context is defined as there being a contributing two-story structure existing within the next lot. Or if you're next to a contributor, you go down two lots. So it's within this confined area.
So it's based on the contributing structures?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, one of the things that I struggle with on this is, if you're going to allow two-story, in effect, in the backyard, do we have more of an issue with people upstairs in the two-story looking down into the backyard of their neighbors versus being in a situation where their second story looks at, you know, down on the roof of their neighbor? So that's one of the many struggles I'm having with, where do you allow two-story, and how do you address that? So just food for thought as we do this.
That would be a good question for people who live near two-story.
Yep. So I don't see anybody else that has any questions at this point. In terms of making recommendations for the version that's going to come back to us, I think it's time for us to give some direction to staff. So I think we need to start with the first one. And I'll just go down the line. Tell me, we're, I understand that we're still going to have a public hearing, and we're still going to have further discussion. But the first one, of course, is the issue of limited two-story construction versus unlimited two-story construction under 4.8. John, you want to lead off the discussion?
Sure, I'll lead it off. So I think this is the hardest one, and kind of the, almost one of the cruxes of things here. And I think there's a lot of things to consider when we think about what we do. I mean, I think it's a pretty dramatic restriction to limit future construction or remodels to one and a half stories. And I think one of the, I can see pluses to both ways, but one of the things that kind of becomes somewhat defining to me is a couple of things. Currently today, you could go build anything you want, and have been able to for the last 40 years, or 50 years, or who knows how long. And you haven't seen a bunch of two-story houses popping up there. I think there's the fear, and probably somewhat warranted, that with the vibrant Old Town that we have there, that there's going to be increased pressure to allow this. But keep in mind, it hasn't yet happened, except in very, very, very limited. I'm afraid that not allowing two stories is kind of so restrictive that it takes away a homeowner's options for helping their property evolve with them. It really pushes you only into adding more, adding more lot coverage and/or two-stories setback, kind of, I think, kind of unusual ways of doing it. And I think allowing two stories just allows that to still happen, but also then would allow, instead of changing the footprint of a house, allowing it to just grow upward. I would love to see some kind of guideline that allows two stories everywhere within the district, but doesn't allow two and a half stories, or doesn't allow a full 35 feet to the mid roof line, or some restriction that it be two stories and less. So two stories, one and a half stories, one story, any of those fine, but not allow past that. And it seems to me there ought to be a way of doing it, certainly within the zoning, there ought to be a way of doing it, by changing the, just changing the height limit, you know, would kind of do that. But I would be in favor of allowing two-story construction, be it new construction or remodel construction, anywhere within the district, particularly if it could be restricted to really just two stories or under, and thereby giving homeowners as much flexibility as possible. And also, I think, protecting the district for the folks who want to see the district protected by, because I think, as I've spoken to a number of them, they're concerned about the overall height and mass of the building, not whether it's a one and a half story that's got a certain height and mass, or a two-story that's got the same height and mass. They're just concerned about the height and mass. And so, that would be my advice, would be that we allow two stories everywhere with some restriction on the height, so that they really can only be two stories, or one and a half story, or one story, and limit it to that, and not end up with two and a half stories or three stories.
David?
So, John, could you go, well, does somebody have the clicker? Can we go back to the overlay where you had the block with the envelopes, structures over top of them?
The blue?
Yes, so right there. So help me, just under the rationale that you just explained, help me understand what you're talking about.
So I think, I mean, I think if you look at this picture, if every house along the street were to become a two-story house, I think that's what you would, that that's what you would be looking at.
But isn't that what you're saying? Is that allowing, allowing throughout the district the ability for any homeowner to come in there and essentially pop the top, or new construction, build a two-story regardless of contributing structures or not? And so, potentially, it could look like that, if every house on the street were to do that. But, I mean, keep in mind, that's the situation today. I mean, today, every house along the street can do that.
Right.
We're talking about a restriction from that, and, you know, that hasn't happened yet. Now, granted, there's probably some additional pressure on that neighborhood now, and maybe in the future. I mean, we never know what real estate markets look like, but, yeah, I think, I think, I think that's what I'm... I'm afraid that so many of the little houses will get additions that will take up lots of lot coverage and maybe two-story in the back, when additional flexibility by the homeowner of just allowing them to stay within the existing footprint and be two stories might be more appropriate for them, just based on what they may want. The one thing I think about this illustration you see on the screen is, is that I think that those are maximum building envelope sizes, where, you know, my vision would be, yeah, if somebody wants to remove a house and build as big as they can, and wants to build a two-story, they could do that. I don't think everybody would do that. I think there might be some that would take an existing small house and just make it into a two-story as opposed to making it as big a two-story as they could. With that extension in the back. I think that, again, to the mayor's point, I think that's, that's an important consideration in any of this conversation, because, again, you know, roofline to roofline, you know, two-story to one-story on similar footprints, you don't have the backyard, you know, you're not looking in somebody's backyard, you're looking roofline to roofline, essentially. So I, yeah, this is a, I don't know how I feel about that. It feels still a little uncomfortable, but I appreciate the conversation.
So you're not going to tell me which way you're going to go right now? Or which way you're leaning, so that we can give guidance?
Well, I want to hear more.
Okay, that's fine. That's fair.
Okay.
Okay, Bob, you're next. Okay, Mr. McGough, you're actually next.
Okay, thank you.
Watch it over mic. That's good.
As we listen to the presentation and the discussion, I think it's important that we keep in mind the reason we started this discussion a few years ago. And that is the question of whether we should maintain the historic nature of this neighborhood. It's my judgment that we should give direction to pursue option one regarding mass and scale, and that the guidelines should not be amended to permit two-story construction. We should limit two-story construction. With all properties in the city, there are certain limitations on what can be done with them regarding height, setback, et cetera, et cetera. There would be here, but there's the opportunity for the homeowner to gain the size home that is desired without destroying, without altering the historic nature of the neighborhood. that is desired without destroying, without altering the historic nature of the neighborhood. I think we ought to, particularly now when we're talking about waivers for particularly difficult cases, I think we should, I would prefer to give direction to limit two-story construction and maintain the historic nature of this neighborhood.
Very good. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the way I was looking at this was, what are the two outcomes? Because one outcome was to preserve the historic character of it, but then there was also discussion, well, some folks wanted it just to keep the character, not necessarily the historic side of it. And when I, after listening to the folks that have talked to me, it seems to me that they're more interested in preserving the historic character of it, so therefore, I would say option one.
Okay, Don?
I agree with Mr. Pfeiffer and Mr. McGough.
Nancy?
I too agree, and I would just like to just remind the City Council of a paragraph that's in our comprehensive plan under Historic Resources. Arvada's downtown historic district, combined with Stocky Walter and Reno Park neighborhoods, make up three of Arvada's four designated historic districts, and what many people consider to be the heart and soul of Arvada. And it goes on to say that, you know, perhaps there may be other areas in the future, but I think it's, one of the most impressive letters that I read, sent to us, was looking at the idea of the fact that we have very few historic districts maintaining the history of Arvada, that that is very important, and that's a larger issue than just looking at homes. And I also want to just add that it grieves me when people use the argument of private property rights without identifying that in that context of private property rights, there is a certain responsibility that is required. And I think in this case, the responsibility is to maintain our historic district.
Okay. I'm looking, I'm looking at you. You talking to me?
I won't say. Okay, you know, as I walked down that, you know, those streets and I looked at that area, you know, I think it's important that, you know, that we maintain that historical character, and so I would agree with what Mr. McGough and Mr. Pfeiffer have said as well.
Okay, well, then it's irrelevant what I think, but, which usually it is. What, here's my problem on this, is what I don't want to see are the three-story, flat-roofed buildings that you're seeing in, you know, other parts of the Denver metropolitan area. And so, you know, I don't want to see those, period. I'm more flexible in terms of two-story. I'm thinking that perhaps the waiver gets us partway there. I would rather just have the ability to say, yes, we'll allow two-story. I agree with Mr. Marriott that I don't think everybody's going to do it, first of all. I'm more concerned about the character than the historical character, personally. So I want things that have the front porches, the, you know, and I think that some of these houses frankly could benefit from updating the character a little bit. You know, I don't know whose houses are hooves in there. I walked the entire district, was very impressed with the pride of ownership I saw in most places, very saddened by frankly some properties that, you know, although they were designated as contributing, frankly don't contribute to the neighborhood, that are more harmful to the neighborhood, just by what's happened to them. And that frankly, the neighborhood would have a better contribution by those particular homes perhaps not being there, and even a two-story, something that looked like it fit in the neighborhood would actually be better for the neighborhood. So, but my count comes down to a five-two, so you have your direction on that provision. So with that, moving on to the next one, minimizing the, which is, I'm sorry, the, is new construction next?
Yes.
Ah, okay. So I assume that everyone feels the same way on that as they did on the other, correct? Okay, so that addresses that one. And then the third one is minimizing the visual impact of a dormer. And does that become pretty irrelevant based upon the prior discussion? Okay, fair enough. You've got your marching orders. Thank you all for your work on this. Again, thanks to the Planning Commission members that were here, thanks to the public that's been part of this process throughout. This is not easy stuff, but it's been a lot of hard work by everybody involved. Good. Okay, Mr. Devon, next.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, we're going to have an update on the City of Arvada Emergency Management and Resilience Program, and Anissa Jane will provide you with that update, and we're getting the presentation up now.
Thanks for having me tonight. It's good to be here in front of you. I know I've had a chance to introduce myself to you in the past, but I'm really excited about tonight because I'm going to get a chance to talk about the visions of the Resilient Arvada program, and two large projects that we've been working on since I came on board last October. Our city's emergency operations plan, we completed an update of that this year, and our very first disaster recovery plan. So before I dive into talking about the two planning projects, I wanted to start by discussing the Resilient Arvada program. And I wanted to start with a very common question, what does resilience mean? And specifically, what does it mean to the City of Arvada? So after the floods of 2013, the City of Arvada participated in the Colorado Resiliency Working Group, under the auspices of the Governor's Office of Resilience and Recovery, to come up with a framework for the state of Colorado to guide, you know, priority planning projects, infrastructure funding, social and health projects, to make our state more resilient and able to recover from a similar event or something completely different, to be frank. So this is the definition that the Disaster Resilience Working Group came up with. It's the ability, resilience is the ability of a community to rebound, positively adapt, and thrive in the face of change. So notice that this isn't specific to disasters. A change could be an economic change, a social change, or a new technological innovation. When faced with adversity, resilient communities are able to maintain their quality of life, their healthy growth, and economic development, and sense of place. So this represents a really holistic approach to planning, governance, and emergency management. And the emergency management community has really embraced this theory of resilience as a guiding way forward. And we're already taking action in Arvada in the context of resilience building. So one of the keys to disaster resilience lies in supporting our people. In addition to planning and exercising with our first responders and building infrastructure that protects us from floods and fires, you know, we realize that people are really, you know, the key ingredient to making a community strong. So when disasters occur, you know, resilient neighborhoods with strong local networks of support and citizen action can recover faster and respond better to an event. And this is not a utopian idea, this is really something that we see in practice and in real life. So in the wake of Superstorm Sandy of 2012, people who were affected by the storm cited that their family, friends, and neighbors were the most helpful sources of assistance and support. So first responders were cited as important parts of their recovery and their experience of coming back from the disaster, but it was their neighbors that they really leaned on the most and that they cited in the end as being, you know, uniquely valuable to them. We also find that in disaster events, people rely on face-to-face communication more than any other type of communication, and that's kind of an art, I would say, that we're losing in our society. You know, we need to learn how to talk to one another. So this is another piece of resilience building, supporting our neighborhoods. It's not as visible as some of the money that we put into infrastructure and planning and exercising, but I'd argue that it's just as important and just as valuable. So this concept of resilience is reflected in a lot of the work that we're already doing, and it's something that we're hearing about in our community survey when we're asking citizens about, you know, what their visions for the future of Arvada are. We hear it when we're doing, you know, comprehensive planning and master planning projects. We want a place where we feel like we can grow, belong to, know our neighbors, and live in a vibrant place. So the Resilient Arvada program really connects to a lot of our larger community goals that we're hearing from citizens, but it also connects to council strategic goals and council strategic results. I've highlighted one of the ones here related to neighborhoods and cultivating neighborhoods in the City of Arvada so that we can liaison with them as staff and council members. Resilient Arvada and our emergency management program also seeks to establish programs and partnerships with Arvada neighborhoods to enhance vibrancy, safety, and community cohesion. So again, these benefits of building resilience are not unique to disasters. Building resilience really kind of crosscuts a lot of our community goals. So I'm going to jump now into talking about some pretty emergency management-specific and traditional projects that we've been working on. The first one is our emergency operations plan, and it really represents a key in the success of emergency response and recovery. This plan describes what we do and how we operate in the event that our first responders' capacity has exceeded. So our law enforcement officers, Arvada Fire Protection District, our EMS first responders are really successful at responding to events, they're good at it. But this plan really outlines what happens when an event exceeds their capacity. We need more resources, we need additional funding, et cetera. So this planning process was a cross-department effort. I worked with the Arvada Fire Protection District, Arvada PD, utilities, Public Works, you name it, to kind of make sure that none of our processes were conflicted. We wanted to make sure that roles and responsibilities were outlined adequately. This plan is reviewed annually, and it's formally adopted by council biennially. So we're coming up on the end of an adoption year, so I will be bringing this plan back to you to formally adopt it, but I wanted to kind of show you our planning process and highlight some of the key changes that were included here. So there are a number of specialized annexes included in the emergency operations plan, and these annexes are managed by each department. So for example, the Streets Department has a snow and ice control plan that details kind of what their routes are, how they manage a snow event in the city. Utilities has a water supply plan that they update regularly. And then Arvada Police has an all-hazards plan that includes things like bomb response, civil disturbance, hazardous materials. So all of this is rolled up into our emergency operations plan. Again, it's activated if we find that we have exceeded our response capacity. So we focused on five areas of improvement for this update cycle. This is a large document, and we found it helpful to really narrow in on these five items. First, we improved clarity of roles and responsibilities. Again, we de-conflicted kind of any roles and responsibilities that were kind of carried by double, by two departments or two entities. We also incorporated disaster recovery considerations for the first time, and I'll get into this more as I talk about our disaster recovery plan, but this was an exciting, an exciting element to add to the plan. So what do we do when it's time to stop thinking about life safety and response, and we're thinking about recovering? We're also aligning our operations with state and federal national incident management system and incident command system standards. So the takeaway here is that we wanted to align Arvada's emergency operations with what everyone else is doing at the state, federal, and local level. We had kind of diverged from the traditional approach to emergency management, and we decided to come back to the standard. It really allows us to communicate more effectively with our partners in a standardized way. We also restructured our emergency operations center organization to align with federal standards. So this is the same as aligning our plan with NIMS and the incident command system. Again, facilitates communication and partnership and resource sharing. And lastly, we added two more elements to the emergency operations plan. The first one was a public assistance and disaster financial management plan. We really leveraged the lessons that we learned from the 2013 flood here. We wanted to outline how we are going to track our spending, including staff hours and volunteer hours, how are we going to communicate with the county and the federal government so that after we close out a disaster event, we can recoup as many funds as possible? So this, we worked closely with the state of Colorado and with FEMA on this portion of the plan. And then we included a cyber incident annex. This is largely the baby of our IT department, but I'm really excited that we have it included now. This document is going to grow and change pretty rapidly, as you can probably imagine as technology changes. So the second project we worked on was the City of Arvada's Disaster Recovery Plan. This is the first of its kind for our city, and it's one of the first of its kind in the state. There's been a push to really start doing this kind of planning since the 2013 floods. We started in November of 2016. It's a regional effort, so we've been working with Jefferson County Emergency Management Sheriff's Office. We've been working with our neighboring jurisdictions, with the State of Colorado Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. And again, this plan really describes what happens after we spin down the emergency operations center. Our law enforcement officers go back to their regular positions, but we still have a lot of work to do. What happens? Where do we pick up the pieces, and what kind of partners do we work with? So we started our effort by outlining some vision and guiding principles for this planning process, and we really came back to this list every time we were thinking about a process improvement or kind of a goal that we wanted to flesh out. The first of our guiding principles was building resilience. So how do we bounce back better? You know, sometimes returning to normal isn't really the ideal situation. We need to learn from, learn from an event and try to build back better when we can. Compassionate recovery was another one of our guiding principles during this planning process. We are committed to respecting the dignity of everyone in our community throughout the whole spectrum of recovery, whether it takes a week or years. A timely recovery. We are committed to having an organized, planned, and practiced recovery process. So this is as much about developing a plan as it is about exercising it over time and improving it. And then a scalable recovery. So no matter the size or the type of event that we're dealing with here, our disaster recovery plan is designed to really be flexible and be able to carry us through the entire process. So the plan includes a base plan that has roles and responsibilities, you know, key process points. Additionally, there are three larger, more detailed plan elements that we worked on. The first was a damage assessment annex, and it really describes how we send out teams into the field to look at our property and infrastructure, assess the damage of our buildings and our bridges, roll up that data, and then share it with the state, with the county, the state, and then eventually the federal government if a disaster is declared. It's a large undertaking, and we're pretty proud of this element of the plan. Debris management is the second one. So imagine that there is another flood or a tornado, a lot of debris is left in the street. How are we, as the City of Arvada, going to manage moving that debris, breaking it down and moving it to, moving it safely and legally to another site, and then disposing of the debris, and then along the way, tracking all of the expenditures, tracking all of the safety procedures? That's a large undertaking, too. So this part of the plan kind of outlines who does what and how we do it through that entire process. And then finally, the last piece of the plan is unmet human needs. So we're talking about sheltering, food, mental health, first aid, where do we put pets? You know, how do we communicate with the public throughout this entire process so they understand, you know, what we're doing, how they can contribute, how they can get more help? And this process was really interesting because we, as the City of Arvada, had to partner a lot. a lot with outside entities and nonprofit organizations to get this piece done because we do have a lot of partners who work in kind of human needs and health sectors. So we completed a tabletop exercise of the disaster recovery plan last month where we got to really test what we'd worked on and kind of refine some final points. And we plan on having the plan completed by the end of this month, and then I'll be back in front of you presenting it for adoption.
Great.
In terms of next steps, again, we're going to finalize these two plans, and I'll submit them for approval. And then we're going to implement the 2018 Emergency Management Training and Exercise Plan. So exercising these plans, testing them, drilling them, is really where the rubber hits the road and where we can learn the most. So in 2018, we will be exercising these plans I just spoke to you about and building off of them. And then, in the same vein as the beginning of the presentation, I'm going to continue my partnership with our Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator to develop programming to really enhance neighborhood-scale resiliency, neighbor-sharing resources, understanding how to be prepared, what resources are available, and how we can kind of really be a more resilient Arvada Any questions?
Okay, questions? Mr. McGough here first.
Yes, thank you. We've had emergency plans in place for a great number of years. What's the most significant difference in the plan that you'll be bringing forward from what we've had in previous plans?
Yeah, I think that the return to those National Incident Management System standards and the Incident Command System standards are the biggest change.
So there are national standards that we will be looking for compliance with?
Correct, yes. So it will help our police department in their accreditation, but it also helps us communicate with other emergency management offices, other response agencies as well.
And you did mention, of course, involving the neighborhoods and
Yeah.
...other allied agencies.
Yes.
And will there be an increase in those kinds of cooperative ventures from what we've had in the past?
Yes, that's my vision, yes. And I would say that the nature of both of these planning processes have facilitated even more relationship building. The Disaster Recovery Plan was a huge project, and we had lots of outside agencies coming to the table who are now ready to share resources with us and collaborate with us moving forward. Yeah.
Thank you. I look forward to the plan.
Yeah.
David?
Who else?
Thank you. That was very informative. I'm just curious, when you say you're going to implement the 2018 Emergency Management Training and Exercise Plan,
Mm-hmm.
How do you exercise this?
Yeah.
I mean, is that, you're saying you're testing it?
Yeah.
How, just briefly, how do you do that?
Yeah, so emergency managers call it playing. It's very fun many times. You basically create a tabletop exercise where you simulate a disaster. You have a scenario and a facilitator who walks you through kind of either hour by hour, or in the case of disaster recovery, you do, you know, one week after a disaster, here's what's happening, how do you react? And you can do a lot of that in real time. So we do a lot of role-playing and exercising. The most important part is getting all of the right staff members in the room, and most often, it's decision-makers, upper-management-level staff who need to really think about what they would do in the situation. There's also drills that are more extensive. Those are always real-time, so we would, you know, spin up the EOC, make phone calls to the state and the county, et cetera. So simulating the event.
Right. So as you've, obviously, over the last month or so, you know, we've had, not we, but the United States has had two hurricanes. Is there one thing in those events that you've seen that, as you've looked at our plans, that you've taken into consideration or thought, man, what if this were to happen? Not a hurricane, but...
Yeah, there are a lot of lessons learned from what's been happening around the country, and it has really made a lot of folks in my professional community take a closer look at what we're doing. I have a goal of building our sheltering capacity at the city. A lot of communities rely on the Red Cross almost exclusively, but if everyone in the county is relying on Red Cross, you know, they have a limited amount of resources. And wouldn't it be wonderful if we could have our own? So resources like that are things that I, capabilities like that are things that I'd like to prioritize, and sheltering, I would say, is the number one for me.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Right. And that's, you know, when you came on board, you know, we had an emergency, what was the title then?
Emergency Management Coordinator.
Right. And the whole concept of going to Community Resilience Coordinator, I think, is just sort of a sea-change in terms of how you look at this. And so you really seem to be the right person at the right time.
Well, thank you.
Hopefully, we don't need to put into practice too many of these things, but you've got to have the skill set to know what to do if, God forbid, something really bad happens. So I feel very good about the concepts, the approach you're taking. Congratulate Mr. Devon for coming up with the concept and bringing you on board.
Thank you. Thank you for saying so.
Don Howard.
You mentioned shelters. I think this is one thing I don't recall in our emergency plan. We had, for example, we could have a tornado, which could be very devastating. It could be as bad as a hurricane for parts of our city. Will this plan include some designation of sheltering of people that are displaced for periods of time?
It absolutely does.
Okay.
Yeah. But like I mentioned before, we rely heavily on the Red Cross here in Arvada, and I would really like to expand our capability so that if the Red Cross was unavailable, we would have a backup plan.
Yeah, I think that's very, very important because what do you do with people who are displaced from their business or their home?
Yeah, that's the first thing people need, right?
Great. Mr. Devon, anything you need from us on this tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Emergency management and now this concept of resiliency is so important for our community as we learned in 2013 and as we've also seen from around the country. And we really wanted to give Anessa an opportunity to present to you what she's working on so that you are comfortable that we are, this is a point of emphasis in our organization. And it's something that if you don't drill on it, if you don't emphasize it, it is something that you will lose. And I appreciate you offering the credit to me. I would like to point out that Bill Ray and Jessica Prosser were the ones who really formulated the concept of combining emergency management with resiliency, and their approach helped us to find Anessa and bring Anessa on board.
Very good. Great. Mr. Piper?
Well, I was just going to say, thank you for doing this. I mean, that's what my business does. We do business continuity and disaster recovery for IT and telecom networks. And, you know, I'm glad we're looking forward enough to apply those best practices and concepts into the way we run the city because it is also business continuity. I mean, people don't realize if your credit card doesn't work at a gas station or a grocery store, I think it's a different type of chaos starts hitting the ground, but it's good to know that we're prepared to. Thank you and good job.
Okay, let's take a brief stretch. Okay, we're going to chat a little bit about the Land Development Code update. Mr. Devon, and I earlier referenced that we've got members of the Planning Commission here. I think we'll just have them introduce themselves to folks.
Patricia Connell, Patty Connell.
Patty, how long have you been on?
This is my second appointment.
Right. So, and you're how far into that appointment?
Well, actually, next year is the last year. I didn't have information if I wanted to continue.
Great.
Doug McGee.
Steve Hannon.
Hi, Steve.
T.O. Owens.
Jenny Wolfslaw.
David Goff.
Mike Griffin.
Great. Great to have you all here, and thanks for, you know, you have a pretty thankless job at times. You get to listen to the public, you listen to staff reports, you get to make recommendations, but we don't always listen to them. So that makes life interesting to begin with. But to some extent, you put in a lot of time, a lot of effort, and you're not the final decision-maker. Sometimes that may be frustrating, other times it may be rewarding, but we appreciate all of your hard work. It's very important to us that we get good constructive feedback from all of you, and we appreciate your service to your community. Okay, Mr. Devon?
Yes, I'll have Rita McConnell introduce this item, and then we have our consultant, Todd Messenger, and his members of his team that make the presentation.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tonight is the first joint workshop of a total of seven with City Council and the Planning Commission on the Land Development Code, and this project is expected to take two years to complete. The project team includes Mr. Todd Messenger with Fairfield and Woods, Rob Smithana, Planning Manager, Loretta Daniel, Senior Planner, Carol Evenez, Senior Planner, and myself. Back in 2014, Mr. Messenger was hired to conduct an evaluation of the status of our Land Development Code. The findings are included in your packet, but that's just the beginning. We are going to be taking continuing comments on the status of our issues with the Land Development Code from City Council, from the Planning Commission, from a large variety of focus groups, as well as Advisory Committee. We have provided updates to the Land Development Code the past couple years while gearing up for this full Land Development Code rewrite. These include the update of the use table, the telecommunications section, the signed code, and the self-storage regulations. We have been very fortunate to have Mr. Messenger involved in three of these four code updates. He has knowledge of the city, he has established positive relationships with the city staff as well as a wide variety of citizens, and he has the respect of many in the community. We really think that we have a great leader who can advise us throughout this process. City Council and Planning Commission will also play a very crucial role in determining the final product of our next Land Development Code that will match your collective vision for the community and that also addresses your collective concerns about development. We look forward to understanding your perspective and giving us direction on these matters. With this update process, you will also have the benefit of a very extensive participation process to inform your decisions. I will now turn it over to Mr. Messenger, who will initiate the presentation, which is expected to take about 45 minutes.
It's a great pleasure to be back in Arvada, helping out with the comprehensive code rewrite. I also wanted to introduce Jennifer from Logan Simpson. Logan Simpson did your comprehensive plan, and we are very fortunate to have Logan Simpson advising us on the project with respect to planning issues to make sure, as we move forward, to implement your comprehensive plan, that we have in mind from the drafters, you know, what they experience from the community. We bring in all that context as well. So, and to Ms. McConnell, thank you very much for such a warm introduction. Did it just click twice? Just right in front of me? How do I go back? That way? There we go. Okay. Okay, so our agenda tonight, we're going to do some welcoming introductions. We'll go over the purpose and objectives of this project. We'll answer the question, why now? We'll go over some strategic objectives in the work plan, and then I will go over a number of issues where, essentially, tonight, what we want to do is knock on the door for some issues that may be sensitive. As many of you know of me so far, I will tend to just step in it and see, you know, how sticky it is, and we'll deal with it. So if we land on anything that's very important to the city, we'll know. We'll find out where the points of sensitivity are, and we'll deal with things accordingly as we go through this process. But we want to know whether we have everything on the table that we can work with, or whether there are certain things we need to work around as we go through this process, and so tonight, we'll learn about that. And then in next steps, we want to get to know what your priorities are. Our assessment of your code is now a couple of years dated, and now that you have a resiliency coordinator, resiliency plan, I think we need to be addressing and folding any issues about how do we deal with sheltering and how do we deal with, for example, temporary debris removal and storage and processing within the context of your zoning in order to make sure that we have spaces that are appropriate for that, that are coordinated with divisions of your resiliency team? And, you know, looking at the first presentation tonight, how do we fold in the sorts of design guidelines that you may be adopting before this project is really underway? And are there lessons learned from that that could be applied to areas that maybe don't have the historic character that you're looking for, but they have a community character that you're looking to protect? What can we learn from those procedures as we're going forward as well? So in terms of purpose and objectives, I'm a physics nerd, and so I'm interested in the relationship between the physical world and the legal one because that's where I spend the majority of my day. And the second law of thermodynamics, as you may recall, is how matter tends towards disorder.
Oh, I remember that real well.
It's the one most of us remember. It's the one we experience every day. And one way of putting it, and there are a number of ways to put it, and it's fairly nuanced and complex if you really want to get into it, but just on the surface level, you know, nature proceeds from the simple to the complex, from the orderly to the disorderly, and from low entropy to high entropy. And it's remarkably relevant to the type of work that I do every day in regulatory reform because the same thing happens in the zoning code. Increasing entropy in zoning is natural, and reducing empathy, or entropy, reducing empathy is a bad thing, but reducing entropy requires work, and that's in the physical world as well as in the code world. All codes, I've been doing this for 17 years in a dozen states and been working on a lot of different code rewrite projects in the course of my career, and I've found all codes ultimately reach a critical stage of complexity. This state of entropy is just a natural thing. That's why every so many years, Congress even talks about reforming the tax code. You know, it has the same problem, and it takes a ton of work, and that's why we usually don't see tax reform happen. So the critical stage creates an opportunity, and that opportunity for reform is to update and align the Land Development Code with the vision of the comprehensive plan and the city's other adopted plans. So while the code is continuing to fall apart, we're making new plans, we're seeing new visions, we're finding new technologies and new ways of living. And so the code can fall apart. That's okay because every once in a while, we need to pick that up, sort out what's still relevant, and then put together a new code to take us on to the next 10, 15 years. So we try to write a code that's worthy of the investment of time that the people that are going to work on it with us as volunteers will spend, and that's compartmentalized enough so that we can adapt and realize the opportunities that come along in the future. So you'll notice that the changes that we'll be suggesting won't just be substantive, but they'll be structural so that we can put in new components and take out old components as we need to without doing damage to the rest of the code. So comprehensive plan implementation, it starts with a vision, which is the Arvada Comprehensive Plan, then we code, and hopefully, we realize the outcome of that code in the market. One of the things that we're really concerned about over the course of the process, meeting with people from a variety of perspectives, is if we code something, can the market deliver it? It's one thing to say, this is what we want. It's another thing to realize whether we have expectations that are consistent with our economic realities. We aim to create codes that'll be used and not things that'll be put on the shelf waiting for something to happen. So Arvada, to tie this home to your mission, we dream big with a vision, and we deliver with a code, and then ultimately, a code that responds to market forces to deliver community benefits. So why now? I'm going to hand this over to Rob to answer that question.
Thanks. So why now? We are looking at a code that's about 10 years old, the last time it was revised. Times have changed. We've also amended that code several times, and just by doing that, we get issues where it's difficult to navigate and search. Those incremental updates have resulted in inconsistencies and duplications in the code. And also, as we look to more recently adopted codes, what do we see in those codes that we don't have in ours? We see that they try to, again, implement the comprehensive plan. Obviously, this, our code was adopted in 2008, our comprehensive plan was in 2014, so we want to make sure that that connection is there and that we update it to relate to that, that we create appropriate zones for the type of development we're seeing in the city today. We're going from a greenfield development city, new development, to a city that's seen infill development and redevelopment of older parcels. And we want to make sure we have predictability and clarity in the development review process, and that's going to help everybody, staff, Planning Commission, City Council, development community. We want to make sure it's customer-friendly and is well-organized, and that has a lot of graphics within it to make concepts easier to understand for all those groups. We also have changes in just what's happening in our environment. We're seeing land use issues, land use trends as they relate to millennials and baby boomers and their housing choices. baby boomers and their housing choices. And does our code address those? It's one thing we'd like to take a look at. Parking, we're seeing modern technology, and that goes a little bit to the transportation column in the center there, but, you know, we're seeing the sharing economy, and how does that affect parking? We're seeing, hopefully, more people using bikes and other means to get to locations throughout the city. We'll be seeing autonomous vehicles. That's a technology that's coming along, and will be here probably before we know it. And then how do we deal with other types of vehicles? Electric vehicles and their parking needs and servicing needs.
Mr. Marriott's got a question.
Rob, I've got a quick question, because I think these will be part of the more, some of these will be some of the more controversial stuff I think we look at with these Land Development Code, or the Planning Commission looks at, but particularly, one of the bullet points is parking reductions due to transit and other modes. Are there actual studies, are there actually examples of that particularly relevant to us, so here in the Denver metro area, or is that just kind of a prediction based on what we think might happen, or?
I think we'll want to evaluate kind of both. We do have some data that we can dive into as we go through this process, both nationally and locally, and then some of it is kind of looking out there. What will autonomous vehicles do to the parking needs? We don't really know that yet, but it's something we might want to keep in mind as we evaluate parking, for example.
Okay, so as we go forward, we'll look at both those types of things?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, you know, in terms of the shared economy, the sharing economy, there's other elements that we need to look at, too, in terms of land uses. You know, we've got Airbnb and vacation rental by owner, and how are we going to deal with those? Do we want to deal with those, and if we do, how? We also want to look at our infill needs and our transit-oriented development needs. As you know, with, we gave a presentation a couple of months ago. I'll hold off on that. But we'll need to take a look at how our infill nature affects where we can accommodate new populations, and also look at mixed-use development opportunities within the city. Want to tie this to a more regional level as well, and that is the Denver Regional Council of Governments and 46 communities back in 2000 signed on to the Mile High Compact. And basically, that document, which Arvada was one of the original members of that group, what that document basically says is that each community is committed as part of the Metro Vision, which is the regional planning document. Each community will work in a coordinated manner to accommodate projected growth. And what does that mean for us? Well, for a region, that means we're going to add about a million more people in the next 20 or so years. And as that relates to the city of Arvada, that's looking at probably another 30,000 people in those 20 or so years that we'll look at needing to accommodate in order to play our role in that Metro Vision and Mile High Compact sense. But to give you an idea, that's about three times the amount of growth that we've, that's occurred in the city over the past six years. We've gone from about 106,000 to 117,000. We're going to do that three times over in the next 20 years. A few months ago, or actually a month or so ago, we presented to you what's happened around our transit stations and the amount of transit-oriented development that we've seen, and that's where we've had some growth occurring as it relates to the city, as well as growth on the west side. But as you can see, and as we discussed during that presentation, we're becoming built-out around those transit areas, or the areas that we currently have designated for transit-oriented development. So in the future, we want to look at potentially broadening our area of influence around those transit stations, from the half-mile, which is, was the previous standard, to the mile, which is becoming the more standard radius around stations, because people are using alternate modes of transportation to get to transit facilities. And it's not to say we want to look at evaluating land uses in all the areas that are encompassed by those radiuses up there, but primarily focus on the corridors, where we have retail that's changing, and as you know, our retail is changing. We're going to a more online economy versus a brick-and-mortar store economy. And can we look at some of those areas where we're having shopping centers that are a little more distressed, creating mixed-use areas where we can accommodate increased population? So those are just some of the trends that are out there that we would like to look at as we move forward with this effort.
David Jones got a question.
So going back to that image, if you could. So in looking at that, there's really only one, there's only one station that really has all of Arvada in it. The others have adjoining communities. What kind of coordination do you need to have with them in making sure that, you know, what we're hoping for within that mile radius is what they're hoping for? Because if you look at the Ward Road Station, you know, we really have very little on that far western side, far southwestern side of that station to really have any impact on...
And we have coordinated in the past with communities. We did our comprehensive plan, and they've done their plans, and we will need to be cognizant of what their desired patterns are in their community, so that we can mesh, because we don't want to have competing interests and competing land uses. We want to be complementary as we go through this effort.
So I guess I just question the half-mile versus the mile, you know, because in some cases, mile, another half-mile is not really getting us, it's outside of our purview, and they may have something entirely different than what, again, than what we were hoping. I just think it's a challenge.
Certainly, certainly, and something we'll need to evaluate as we go through this process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carol, and she'll talk a little bit about the objectives.
I'm going to talk over, let me do my mic a little bit here. The key objectives of what we're proposing with the Land Development Code, we basically have five major objectives, but there will be other things as we go through the process. Implement the 2014 comprehensive plan and other city plans. That is a very important step in terms of identifying all the different land use policies that are in the comprehensive plans that would need to be pulled in, in terms of the code. As Bob, Rob was saying, that the growth is expected to be 154,000 is the COT plan overall growth, and you can see that there's a lot of people moving into, not only to Denver, but then coming out to Arvada and the suburbs. And so trying to identify how we would be able to accommodate the new residents that are coming in, as well as the existing residents that are also staying with their families and stuff. We're also seeing a lot of changing demographics, and so how do we plan for that? And then we've got to coordinate the land use transportation, including the pedestrian and bicycle plans, the Old Town, the transit framework, and the TO development, as well as the sustainability objectives. So that there's a lot of that that has to go in, into the thought process of coming up with our land, the code. And then how do we ensure that there's compatibility with the different land uses? When you've got a mixed-use adjacent to established residential, you know, what are some of the things that we need to do to ensure that that compatibility is addressed? The city's council's strategic results also would be incorporated with the code. How do we implement that? How do we get compatible infill development in our urban centers and corridors? And then we're also looking at the response to changing housing preference by providing diversity of housing types. And, you know, we do have a lot of single-family homes. We have some duplex, but there is other housing types that we need in terms of mid-to-higher-density type housing. And then how do we encourage for having housing for our seniors that is attainable? So those are...
Great, Bob Piper's...
So, I know we probably, maybe I know the answer, but I want to make sure we touch it again. How are we defining urban centers and corridors?
Well, we have established the urban center, so we've identified that. If you recall, there is, there is area that is in the Walmart area, that's an urban center. There's one in Candellas.
Is that defined by Dr. Cog?
Yes. We had to go through the process.
We might want to challenge those, that thought process, because like an urban center that they've listed in Candellas, there's no buses. There's no plans for buses. There's nothing going out that way. There's no train. So we need to really be thoughtful in how we define urban centers and corridors, because if we want to reduce parking, which I think we'll talk about later, and others culturally and accessibility to transit, I think it's going to be a big challenge for us.
Right, and I think some of the idea when they were doing it with, you know, is that it was a long-term plan, and so our hope is that our Land Development Code would look at that the next few years, and yes, we'll certainly look at that in our process.
Yeah, I mean, we get funding that way through Dr. Cog, so we kind of have to kind of do it, but, you know, absent a bus or any transit, it always bothers us.
Correct. With the code update, we'll be looking at streamlining the development review process. Again, we're going to be updating the different processes and procedures. We want to simplify the language and create more predictability and clarity in development review and approval. I think that is something that is really necessary for not only the staff reviewing the plans, as well as the public, and also for you folks making those decisions here. And then to reduce the time from concept to completion, and look at other alternatives to delegate to administrative review.
You let me know when you figure out how to make City Council more predictable.
With the new code, we will.
Okay, good. Thank you.
That's what we like to achieve going forward. And then also, by updating and simplifying the code, we're looking at, potentially looking at the number of zoning districts that we currently have, and how do we, you know, what can we still keep, we do have like the planning and development that basically mirrors a lot of the straight zone district standards, and so it's like, why do we have that? It's really not what we originally started with, the PUDs having more flexibility in the process of trying to get developments that would not necessarily fit into the zoning district. So we'll be examining that, and then looking at the other zoning districts that are like the new communities out in, out in the west, which every time they're going to do something, they come in and rezonate to a PUD. So is, you know, is that district necessary, because it's going right into the PUD development standards? We also would like to promote mixed-use and infill development, increase, promote, increase in densities where appropriate, and address new and emerging housing and business types, and overall improve the organization of the code and format, and having a lot of graphical presentation. And ultimately, we'll be mapping and revising the zoning districts to meet the code changes.
David.
So when you say emerging housing, so I remember last, I remember last summer, we had a lot of workshops on tiny houses and all the different kinds of alternatives. Is that what you mean by emerging?
Yes.
Okay.
We're looking at opportunities for having more housing that is not being provided to date, and so, you know, we're looking at tiny housing, the duplex, triplex, you know, more in-between, between what is from single-family all the way to high-density.
Okay, thank you.
And then also like other opportunities for senior-type housing.
Right, thank you.
So we've got our committees and groups in place. We have an advisory committee of 15 Arvada residents, and they are made up with community leaders, technical and professional folks, people with passion to work with the communities, as well as other representatives that have had a lot of input with Arvada. The technical committee is basically a 25-member development review process with the city. They're made up of all the planning staff, engineering, traffic, water, utilities, stormwater, et cetera. And so that would be the development, who's been working and using the code and providing a lot of insight and input as to how to improve the code. And then we have seven focus groups. This has been really exciting, because a lot of the focus, the people that we've asked join other focus groups, there is seven, and it goes from Old Town to New Development to Infills, to residential housing, and we've got about an average of 12, 15 people in each of the groups. And then we, then the project team is who you're meeting tonight, is with Rob, Loretta, myself as staff, and Rita, and we also have Randall and Reed with the legal department also working with us. Who provide that.
Bob, so these groups are already formed?
Yes. We are scheduled to meet with the focus group. The advisory committee has already been, we met with them. The technical committee is city staff, and the focus group will be having meetings next week and in November.
So when the citizens were engaged, I'm sorry, maybe I was not paying attention, but when did we ask for citizen input and volunteers?
Well, after that, we would have public outreach, and so...
So you haven't put the citizen ones together, the advisory? You have?
Well, the advisory committee is in place already, and that is made out of 15 Arvada residents.
I guess we're wondering, what was the selection process?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out. How would I want to get on there, if I wanted to, or one of these citizens wanted to?
Yeah, you're talking about the advisory committee selection process. We had an extensive list of names from City Hall 101, from the comprehensive plan update, and from all the various code amendment projects that we were involved in. And we whittled it down based on those that had a broad general perspective of interest in the entire city, knowing that on the focus groups, we were going to get people that were interested in very specific topic areas. So the advisory committee names, we also solicited names from council, and we did receive some of them. Once we filtered through all the names that we received, we selected the advisory committee, and the ones that weren't on there that had specific interests, we put in focus groups. So everyone that wanted to participate in the process is included in that process. Does that answer your question?
Bob and I are sitting here scratching our heads, trying to remember back to when that happened.
Yeah.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, and Mayor Portem, I can't tell you the exact date, but I can tell you that I did have it in one of our weekly memos, where we announced the names and...
I'm sure you did.
We did, we did. We don't do these kinds of things without making sure you're all informed.
I'm sure we were. We just have a lot of things to...
Everyone who's running for city council, you get a fire hose every Friday, all the time, call.
Yeah.
So it's, okay.
So we do have that extensive list. If there are others you think need to be included, certainly pass those on to Carol, and we will add them in the appropriate location.
So there's still opportunity to put some citizens on there?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then the public outreach opportunities, like I said, we have the committees and focus group. We will also be opening open houses. And then what's exciting also, we do have a webpage that is being launched today. It's advancedarvada.org, and that's basically where we're going to keep pretty much everything that we're doing with the update. We're going to have meeting notices in minutes. We'll have that for all the committees and focus groups, and then also for the open houses attendance. We'll also be having issues paper and surveys, basically following everything that, before we even go to the process of meeting with the focus groups or coming back to you, we would have these information available to them, and then provide for public review and comments on the LDC models, and then information on remapping, as well as having social media and newsletters. So we feel like we are going on the right path to try and engage everyone, and we would continue to keep through emails, as well as going out to the public in any event that we can.
So for the work plan, this is a complicated project, so it'll take two years to complete, and this illustrates that we're really dividing this into five phases. And the orange stars that are on this chart are the Joint Council and Planning Commission workshops that we'll have distributed throughout the two-year period. Where we are now is that first asterisk or star up there, October the 9th, and we're, as you can see, in the Phase 1, the project initiation. We had our advisory committee meeting on September 14th. We will have our next technical committee and advisory committee meetings on December 7th. So where we are really now is in this phase of issue identification. As Carol mentioned, we'll have the four focus groups next week, and then we'll have three more focus groups in the middle of November. So through this period as well, too, there'll also be development of some issue papers, so we'll be really fleshing out policy direction, issues, and really information gathering. In Phase 2 is really the phase where that code gets written. It's going to be written in three modules. So the first module is going to be zoning districts and land use. So by that period of time, when that is in a draft form... So by that period of time, when that is in a draft format, it'll be about middle of April, we'll be back here again to present that code. And then there'll be the first community open house. There'll be a period of time when the code is going to be on the website, so there'll be comments and that period of time for the comments to be collected from the public, and the revisions will be made to that code module. The second code module will be development standards, so that'll be the second community house, open house, where that'll be presented to the public. And again, it'll follow the same format where it'll be presented to you before the community open house. And then after the community open house, it'll be available on the website for public comment. The third module is going to be administrative processes and procedures, and that sort of will finish up into the fall, and again, the same format. Then we move into phase three, which is really the consolidation of the draft code. And concurrent with that, there'll be remapping of the zone districts. And then early in 2019, the draft code will be ready to be presented to Planning Commission and to council at workshop again, and then we'll have an open house. Then there'll be the final revisions, and then we'll move into the final phase, which will be the code approval process.
Yes, David.
Thank you, David. So is it typical, and I'm looking at that, is it typical, this is the first time I've done a land development code, is it typical it's not closer to the comprehensive plan instead of five years later? Because then five years after that, we're going to, comprehensive plan's being reviewed again, right?
Keep in mind, the comprehensive plan is much longer term. Ideally, you want the land development code to follow at some point after that. We did anticipate following within a couple of years of the comprehensive plan, but we discovered we had more urgent matters that needed to be dealt with. The sign code was one of the critical ones, based on the U.S. Supreme Court ruling, that we really had to put this off to deal with that specific issue. So within the timeframe that we're looking at now, it's reasonable based on my experience in 30 years doing land development code updates.
Well, maybe not historical, but do you think it's better that we do it within a year or two after the comprehensive plan versus what we're doing today? I mean, we got to get it on the rails and get it back on its tracks. But it just seems like we might just create another problem, like we're talking about now, where we're rarely getting to the land development code now from 2008. It was misaligned with our comprehensive plan, and so now we're catching up the code today or 19 to be with something that's from the 14 comprehensive, you know, we're just be off the whole time.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
So do you think in 2024, 2025-ish, will that be another land development code opportunity to get closer in line with comprehensive plans? I assume you'd want to do it right after you redid your...
Yeah, within a reasonable time period. I think right now, based on what's going on in the city, it is a reasonable time period based on the planning trends we're seeing too.
Okay.
David. Thank you. So I know that the community development group sees city council as a very predictive group, and you know exactly how we think and how we're going to react to something. I'm just curious on, you know, these, these asterisks where you're coming to council for the code module one, and then, you know, a week or two, I'm guessing after that, you're going to present this to the public in a public forum, in a public open house. Let's just pretend that you come to council in a workshop that Monday night, and we completely blow up whatever it was that you were intending to, to present to the public a week or two later. How, how will we deal with that? Because we are predictable.
Right, Kelsey Manjoez, the answer is we, we observe the same sorts of resiliency strategies in projects like this as the city would expect after a big storm. You know, we pick up, we dust ourselves off, we fix the problem, and we reschedule if we have to.
Okay, so you're willing to...
But we're going to adapt as we need to, to make a quality code for this city that reflects the values that the council gives us direction on, and that's what we intend to do. If something gets messed up with the schedule, my commitment to you is to deliver, and if we have to change the schedule to deliver, we'll do that.
Yeah, because I just want to make sure, obviously, that, you know, whatever it is that we're presenting to the public in those open houses, that council fully supports and is fully behind, because 10 times out of 10, our constituents are reaching out to us either before or after those meetings, wanting clarification or wanting, you know, to understand more because they maybe were, didn't have the right question that night. So I just think it's important that, you know, if in fact, I'm not saying that it will happen, but if, you know, if things get, you know, crazy weird on those Monday nights and those workshops, that we're able to, to back up and really ensure that we've got the right product for the community.
Certainly. And one of the ways that we attempt to avoid situations where we're going back to the drawing board after a few months is we do these meetings to truth test the work of the advisory committee. So we expect that the advisory committee is broadly representative. That's how they were selected. And as a broadly representative group, they would suggest something to the council that the council would like. Now, if there's a fundamental misalignment between the committee and the council, we find out rather early about that, and then we have to supplement the advisory committee to make sure that we get something that's closer in line with the ideology of the council. But we truth test it against the council and against the public, and then we make sure that we're triangulating something that's going to work. At the end of the day, though, it's council that needs to adopt the product, and so we need to be very cognizant of how that comes together. So we will be thinking about you as we're writing, regardless of what we hear, and we'll try to say to the committee, if we think they're saying something that this council wouldn't adopt, hey, that's a great thought, but, you know, we need to truth test that with council before we're going to fully develop that.
Okay, thank you.
Before Loretta continues, I just want to emphasize, we think about all of you all the time.
In your nightmares.
Well, that is it for the work plan, so I'm going to turn this now to Todd.
Okay, so we're going to raise a bunch of issues, and these are issues that we think are things that we would like to investigate as we move forward. And just to hit on a couple of questions that were asked, with respect to the timing between the comprehensive plan and this document, sometimes we find out along the way that we really need to offer an up, an amendment to the plan because we found something out during the coding process as to a particular area or a particular topic that wasn't uncovered during the broader sweeps that we do during planning processes. So planning work is fun, zoning work is grinding and horrible, and it requires a lot of coffee and a lot of dedication. So when we do public participation for planning, we get broad and relatively usually shallow public participation. In, in zoning work, we get deep and narrow public participation, and that's why we need to figure out advisory committees that are broadly representative. And we will reach out and we will explain in plain terms, and we will meet people where they are, both physically and from their sense of perception or occupation or vocabulary. But please, in terms of expectations for the, the level of excitement and interest around a project like this, we're not all excitable about zoning as I am. So people have their day jobs to do, and we respect that as well. So that's why we look very carefully to the plan, and we see how can we implement from there. And that's why we're so excited to have Logan Simpson on our team so that we can ask those questions. What did you learn when you were talking to people and you got to this policy? What did you mean? How much flexibility is there here and so forth as we go forward to try to implement these policies? So I guess you all got a copy of our 2015 code assessment, and so we had eight bullet points basically that came out of that assessment that basically gave us the sense that it's time to euthanize the patient and start over with respect to your land development code, preserving, of course, all those aspects of wisdom and dispatching with all of those things that were such a patchwork that we can't make sense of it anymore. And by way of context, I just want to offer this, it dovetails with the entropy discussion that we've had earlier. When you have a high level of entropy in a zoning code, it's the planned unit development process that's the glue that starts to hold everything together. And as a result of that, what really happens is you have city councils that, and this is everywhere, it's not just in Nevada, so this is talking to you from my broad experience around the country, is you have city councils that are very used to processing development applications instead of setting land use policy for the future. Because you get the application, now you're responsible for that neighborhood or that area or that particular development, and when something gets approved, it's got your fingerprints on it because you're negotiating the terms from the DIAS in some cases. When you redo a land use code, this is your opportunity to not just say, this is a project that I approved, this is my signature project of my administration or whatever. This is the DNA for the future development and my enduring legacy as a council member, as a planning commissioner on the future of this community. This is a way where staff can carry on with the policies that we set, and this development then will carry on into the future until some future council decides to shift the policy. And usually when we're talking about those shifts, those are incremental. So what you're really talking about, your legacy being is a culture change and a change in the way we look at land development in order to implement the, the comprehensive plan. And then from there, all the next changes will be incremental off of some fundamental change that this council gets to set forward that really only usually happens, you know, once a decade or so. So that's a really important legacy that the work of the planning commission and the city council will leave for the citizens. Now, when you create standards that say, this is something that I would approve in the abstract, and so when things come in, we know that this is something we're going to like, then you can delegate those sorts of things to administrative staff. So we're going to talk about delegations to administrative staff, but we would not expect this council to be comfortable with that, given the history in Nevada, until we've given you a set of standards that you can all agree, hey, this is how we would want development to go forward, and now we're comfortable that it's clear enough what our vision from a regulatory perspective is so that staff can carry on and do what we want them to do, go forth and do good, as we say. So I just wanted to mention that in terms of the process because PUD is really, for us, when we see a big map with a lot of PUD, that's a sign that the code is broken. That's one of our first signs. So we want to tailor the code provisions for different contexts. New development requires a different sort of code, as Rob alluded to earlier, than redevelopment, infill, and building expansions. I mean, you've already looked at some standards in your first item tonight about how to deal with infill and expansions, and so your whole city is like that. When you've got a neighborhood that's just got a few vacant lots or a few underutilized properties in it, that's an entirely different circumstance than a former farm field or pasture and how you grow that up. You've got a lot different constraints and a lot more people to be upset if things go wrong in the former context as opposed to the latter. So we have different tools that we use in those circumstances, and we would suggest that they be deployed in terms of zoning districts that are either built up or not built up. Now, right now, you have a new community zoning district that kind of suggests that you have that thought in mind already. It's not very well utilized in your code. Most of that stuff has moved over to PUD at this point, so we would, we would scrap that effort and start again with a very much more targeted and much more, I think economically realistic set of programs to deal with the new development areas. We want to focus on compatibility, practicality, and economic viability. Compatibility is a word that shows up in your code a lot. I'm sure it's a word that makes this council very predictable because you all agree on what compatibility is. I like a good laugh line. I like to do it this way.
That's not true.
Very good.
Compatibility is the most troublesome word in our procedure for the land.
I absolutely agree. So with a dose of sarcasm with the former comment about it, I would ask, you know, everybody what kind of music you like to listen to. I like a broad range of stuff, but mostly I listen to old-school punk rock, and I think a lot of people don't consider that harmonious. So if we were to look at harmonious as a compatible term to compatibility, you might like classical or country or classic rock or modern or alternative or whatever. We all have a different idea what those harmonies should be, and maybe on a different day, you like a different type of music. The same thing with your visual environment. One day you might feel like going to downtown Denver, the other day you might feel like hanging out in Old Town Nevada. We need to understand what compatibility is, and that's a big part of this project. And I would venture a guess that compatibility is different in different parts of the city, and you're going to be looking at massing and, and building character in some areas. You're going to be looking at landscaping and buffering in other areas, and in some other areas, it may just relate to use and lighting and things like that. And so what we would really like to be able to do at the end of this program, not today, but at the end of the two years, is dispatch with the word compatibility in your code entirely and measure compatibility in different circumstances the way council would measure it in those circumstances and reflecting all the fights and all the hard-fought battles that you've had over that word so that we understand it in, in the way it should be deployed in different contexts. So that's what we mean by getting you to a level of comfort that you know that staff understands what you mean by compatibility because we've cut it down into its constituent parts, dispatched with the overall concept, and said, this is what we mean by that. So that's in terms of compatibility. Practicality just meaning, hey, if we're going to ask people to do something, we need to make sure we're realistic in terms of that expectation so that somebody will use the code and it will be an economic development tool instead of thwarting people's expectations for what they can do with their project. We want to emphasize the essential elements of community character. Many of you have heard me talk about community character as the relative balance in a particular space of buildings, landscaping, and asphalt or concrete. And so when you say you need to provide more or less parking, you're changing the ratios of those things, and that has implications for your character of your community. If you're a community that's very well landscaped, then you have to have room to put those trees and those grasses and those landscape elements in, and that takes away from the room that you need for parking and building. So if we expect to have a lot of parking, we can't expect to have a lot of buildings or a lot of landscaping because we only have a certain amount of real estate. So we need to focus in on what are the impacts on community character for the things that we're asking people to do. We want to evaluate the number of zoning districts and consolidate zones. We already had the great opportunity to work with a city to change the use list into a manageable chunk of stuff that appreciates new and emerging industries and current industries. But the number of zoning districts in Nevada is out of, out of hand, and so we need to get rid of a bunch of them. We actually need to add a few new ones because some of your planning documents are calling for zoning districts that you don't have, and then we need to consolidate others that aren't different enough from a community character or land use perspective to justify their independent existence. And so when we do that, we get down to tables in chapter five that we can actually handle and that we can get our minds around, and we're, we talked about micromanaging land use before, and now this is the second step of reducing complexity to stop the micromanagement of land use from a district perspective. And I think that'll be a huge benefit in terms of marketing real property in Nevada for economically beneficial purposes. We want to encourage housing diversity and market responsiveness, and we'll talk about that in terms of both substance and processes we go through this project. But we want to allow a whole host of different housing types without having to require rezonings or complicated flaming hoop-style planned unit development procedures, and we have ways of suggesting how to do that in expedited ways that allow developers to plan for and meet market segments and not show up, you know, a day late and a buck short because the process waylaid them while the market moved on. We want to evaluate possibilities for parking flexibility, and we've talked about a number of them, and it didn't come up. I think, actually, Rob may have mentioned things like Amazon, but we were having a conversation earlier about how a lot of us get deliveries for retail and don't spend a lot of time at retailers anymore. That has an implication today for parking at the retailer, the fact that so many people are just ordering things online and having them delivered. But it also has, if we go through the business use of the home, we used to say, you know, you can't have a bunch of deliveries every day. How many of us now have two, three deliveries a day from Amazon from, coming from various places like individual vehicles or UPS or FedEx? We're actually demanding more out of delivery services today than we ever did, so that home occupation that gets two deliveries a week is no longer as big of a deal, so we need to be looking at those things. We want to restructure and simplify procedure and be more administrative where we can, where the council's comfortable with the standards that will shape that development. And then we need to reorganize and refine code. We need to separate regulatory language from definitions. We need to separate procedural language from regulations. We need to separate policy statements that are not intended to create a standard from actual standards so that we don't use words like compatibility to defeat a project that actually meets all of the other quantitative standards in your code. By the way, I talk fast, I talk like a guy who drinks a lot of coffee. When you need to stop me and ask any questions, feel free.
I would ask you to move along a little bit.
Okay.
Maybe not talk...
Right on.
The fast is okay, but it seems like the detail's a little bit more than we probably need tonight.
I will fly through it then. So zoning districts and land use, we need to know if the current zones are working, why do we have so many zones, why so many PUDs? We're going to be looking through all this. We expect that you want us to look through all that, and so I don't think that'll be very controversial. With respect to development standards, we need to understand what compatibility means. We need to understand if there are areas in the city that can accommodate more than 35 feet in building height. Is this something we're allowed to look at, something that's been so key to the zoning code to date, city-wide? Are there certain locations where a bulk plane would be inappropriate, for example, in terms of regulating height so that you could build maybe a 70-foot story next to a, a small one or two-story building? These are things that we really actually want to look at in terms of urbanizing portions of our Vada to respond to transit-oriented development and other potential market demands. Form versus function, do we have areas where the form is more development than, or more relevant to the environment than the use of the property? You know, the form of Old Town is really important. What uses could be accommodated there that may not be there today? Form around transit stops is very important. And what areas is the form of residential development more important than its density? You guys talked about micro units a while back. Those can be 200, 300 units per acre. Is that something that the city of our Vada can, can absorb and wants to absorb? Parking or, you know, we've talked enough about parking. Housing, should it be easier to develop neighborhoods that include a variety of housing types? Can we do that administratively or with a planning commission approval without council having to look at it if certain protections are in place? Should new housing be allowed in existing neighborhoods of tract homes? Should we be able to redevelop a couple of lots as a cluster, a clutter, cluster of cottages? Sorry, it's a little late in the day, in order to, you know, provide variety within an established area? Are there certain areas where we could do that? Where are the areas of change and where are the areas of stability in the city? Are those issues that we can crack open? Are those issues that we can crack open and try to take a look at with our committee process? How do we best accommodate emerging housing types and group homes and other arrangements that people are going to need moving forward? And how can we improve opportunities for attainable housing that's consistent with the quality and character of the city of our Vada? In terms of quality of life, you know, do we have appropriate standards right now that are consistent with Colorado water law for reducing flood risks in a reasonable way, promoting low-impact development and other design techniques to control stormwater? And should parks and recreation amenities be adjusted, depending on whether you're in a small urban area near Old Town or out west or in some area where parks are underserved? Should we be breaking up the city into different contexts with respect to people's expectations about what recreational opportunities are going to be available? Should the city investigate or ways to promote or require investments in public art? Identities for specific areas or landmarks? Should we explore our approach to area lighting? Are landscaping and buffering requirements working? Or if not, can we make them simpler or can we make them better, so that we're making sense in terms of the economics of it and in terms of community characters of it? And should the code address renewable energy at a variety of scales? So from the solar panels on the roof or the solar shingles on the roof, as the case may be, to the field in the HOA that might be used for community solar? Are fees and dedications right, or should they be recalibrated? Should the exactions and impact fees be recalibrated and clarified? Keeping in mind that impact fee studies that are legally required are not part of our purview, but should that be worked into it? In terms of process, what can we delegate to the city's professional staff? I've already revealed my bias on this, so my bias would be as much as we can, consistent with this council's direction. What should be delegated to boards and commissions? Is it okay, Mayor Williams, you've talked about the planning commission having the thankless job of making recommendations. Is there an opportunity to say, "Okay, planning commission, you decide that application, and if the council wants to have additional procedural protections, can we just put it on a consent agenda for ratification instead of another full pellet carrying on the item?" And what types of approvals could we do that with? And who should be the final appellate body for an administrative appeal? How many bites at the apple should there be? Should you be able to appeal the planning commission and then appeal them to council, or should you just get one bite at the apple, as we lawyers like to say? And then on the appeal question, who should be able to appeal? Should neighbors be able to appeal? Should anybody be able to appeal? You know, how much should we open that process up? And then in terms of interdepartmental coordination, how do we develop objectives relative to other departments? Tap these engineering preferences for placing utilities in certain areas where, you know, parks might want trees in those areas. And then what should be in the code as opposed to other codes and standards? You know, we need to work with the other organizations, other departments, to make sure that if they have standards, we're not conflicting, and that's a very complicated exercise. So what we're about to undertake is trying to solve a n-dimensional Rubik's Cube, but that's what we do. So are there any other issues that we may have missed in that long-winded presentation?
Why don't you finish, though, Mark? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I do have a question. In reading over the report that you prepared in 2014 and comparing here, in that report, you make reference pretty early on that, about new development and so forth, discouraging investment and reinvestment, and the fiscal impact of burdening city streets, infrastructure, and services. Will that be part of the land development code here to take a look at those kinds of impacts?
Yeah, we need to understand that, you know, our Vada is a living system as a city that needs to be fiscally sustainable, that needs to deliver services to new residents. And so when we're creating standards to allow for new development, how much of that burden is going to be borne by that new development or shared with existing taxpayers? And so we need to come to terms with that. And where it becomes especially touchy is when you're trying to provide something like attainable housing, or where you're trying to do some kind of catalytic project that's going to spur reinvestment, but the proof of concept hasn't been made yet, so the private dollars aren't flowing yet. So we are always aware of that as we're going forward, and that's something we want to make sure during this process everybody's thinking about. Is that going to be revenue neutral, revenue positive, or is that going to be a drain? And if it's going to be a drain, how do we make up for it? How do we have policies that allow, you know, this to feed this in a way that's fair and makes sense?
So balancing out incentives or at least lack of disincentives for development and the impacts upon the current infrastructure.
Yeah, we need to be considering that, for sure.
This plan will adopt, the land development code development will address those economic issues too, will take those into consideration.
To a certain extent.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, to the extent that we can with a code like that. And also appreciating that the market forces are going to deliver a certain amount of retail. We might want more, because we're sales tax-driven in Colorado, but we may not be able to get more, because amazon.com has eaten everybody's lunch. So we really need to, and now you'll be eating your lunch at Amazon, I guess, with the delivery services from Whole Foods, right? So that's, we need to, we need to think about, how do we create a model? So in terms of fiscal sustainability, do you create a street network that's going to be allowing for multimodalism, so we can get more out of it? So we need to think about investments that protect our future in terms of fiscal responsibility as well.
Thank you. Any other issues that council wants to? Mr. Allard?
Mayor Williams?
I don't know if it'd be an issue or not, but what about allowing 400 or 500 feet buildings? Would our Vada prohibit anything over certain height and what should that height be?
Yeah, right now, we're at 35 feet citywide.
Right, but I'm saying if somebody comes in and says, "I want to build a 10-story office building," would we not allow that?
Currently, you wouldn't.
Is that an issue or not?
Yeah, we think you should think about where that 10-story office building might fit, if there's any place at all. We're asking you tonight, can we go and figure out if there's a place for a 10-story office building, 100 feet, 150 feet, 200 feet, whatever? We just need to figure out, is 35 feet sacrosanct? Because we're already actually seeing problems with that. When we did the self-storage regulations, you know, a lot of those developers were saying, "We actually need 40 to get these three floors of self-storage in with the parapets and the things like that." So, you know, there's already some pressure on it. And then when you think about it, 35 feet in your single-family residential zones is way taller than anything you have for a single-family product. So you're talking tonight about two and a half stories in an historic zone. You don't need, maybe 27 would handle most of what you'd need in residential. So one of the things that we want to do is calibrate the actual requirements to the actual physical conditions. I mean, you mentioned with respect to the historic district that nobody's done this yet, but the problem is, when somebody does do it, then everybody's going to want to do it, because that proof of concept is in. And then you're going to invite scrape-offs, because the economics will flip right away. All you need to do is look at Cherry Creek, where we have a bunch of bungalows, and now we have one left. You know, you've got a desirable location next to a desirable amenity next to transit. It's only a matter of time. And so right now, anywhere in your neighborhoods where you've got a building that's less than the code allows, there's always the potential that you'll get with the code allows, and then somebody will think that that property owner got a favor, when in fact, they're just exploiting rights that were there the whole time, that nobody else knew about, because they just, they don't, most people don't know what zoning district they live in. That's not the slightest if we don't ask those questions.
Alternate, planning commission, have some questions?
Yes, Mayor Williams, just a comment. In reading the reports from several years ago, which were very good, they gave a lot of detail, and Mayor Pro Tem Pfeifer mentioned the misalignment between other plans, the comprehensive plan, the council's strategic results. So it seems like we need a triggering mechanism, that when we make changes, just in the last month, the planning commission approved the Bicycle Master Plan. So what do those new plans or amendments do to other key plans within our system that we need to be aware of and not find out about them a year later or two years later and go, "Oh, we didn't know it had this kind of impact." So whatever trigger we can put into this key code to help us understand how changes affect other big plans.
Yeah, I think in response to that, we've got, that actually opens up a couple of issues. You know, the first one is, we're going to create a code that's compartmentalized in a way that when you change your plans, you only have to change a little bit of code, and it doesn't disrupt everything else. So the organization of it is really, really important for, what we'll call tonight, because of the context, code resilience, right? We want that code to be durable. We want it to reflect the investment of time that went into it. And so when you change your plan, unless it's something crazy radical, you'll be able to change a few sections to implement those new planned components. And the second thing is, we need to take inventory of the plans that you have, for example, transportation plans, so that we can say, when you build this new subdivision, you have to build in the trail system consistent with plan whatever is amended from time to time, because we know you'll have a plan like that that's amended from time to time. So we'll have, we'll build in sort of both of those things. But in terms of the comp plan, you know, you actually have urban renewal authority plans that were, that contemplated new zoning districts that were never delivered, that are older than your comprehensive plan. So we'll deliver those zoning districts. It may be a moot point, because it may have been done by PUD at this point, but those are important considerations, is to be able to move on those items. And again, your code structure will allow that in a way that'll be a lot more productive than trying to amend the current code. There's no more Band-Aids you can put on your current code.
Anything else from the planning commission at this point? Yes?
Just a comment. I am on the, they asked for two volunteers from the planning commission, so I volunteered as one. But there are, in reference to the advisory committees, so I think I'm not on any of those, but as a citizen, perhaps, and having been on a planning commission definitions and the Section 5, if you're eliminating, there are going to be people who really like it and people who don't think there should be changes, as good for the citizens. But extensive communication from people with definitions, and when you're introducing mixed housing, where there's low housing and high-type housing, definitely a different concept in some of the areas.
Thank you. We'll be taking all that into account.
Well, I'll just ask the mayor, is this an opportunity for us to just give stuff?
Well, you know, yeah, it's kind of, we got broken up into, do we have additional issues? They've got a couple more things, but I think you can ask questions or make comments about anything at this point.
Yeah, well, I don't, it's the purpose of this, just to kick this off, and then we'll get feedback later down the road. Because I mean, there's some things that, as you know, I think between the planning commission and us, there's just little issues that pop up in these hearings, like parking and like space and the plane. I mean, we kind of mentioned them here, but I'm not sure I'm in alignment with the way these are worded and some of the stuff. Like, I still struggle with parking, and I don't want us to have these kickoff meetings with advisory committees leading down the direction of, "Well, we're going to reduce parking in half at residential places," when maybe we, as council, don't agree with that or planning might not agree with that. So is this an opportunity to discuss that now, or should we wait?
Well, I think you can. I mean, one of the things that we want to do is to create a land development code that aligns with the standards and the vision you have. And I've heard this council talk about parking with respect to townhome developments and those kinds of things, and a feeling that you want to have probably more parking rather than less parking. So those are things that, you know, we're already aware of. You know, if you want to, if there's some, I guess if there's some red herrings out there that you'd like the staff and our consultants to be aware of, you can make those aware, you can express this to us now.
I don't know if those are red herrings or sacred cows.
Sacred cows.
Sacred red cows.
Well, I mean, just because, I mean, some of the hearings we've heard and some of the developments we've seen, we're not a me-too city in many aspects, and I don't want us to lose our character of our community, which sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, but we're not a Lakewood, we're not a Wheat Ridge, we're not a Westminster, we're not, we don't have big shopping malls like Brimfield. You know, we, our Vada is special because of open space and space between houses, which we've completely lost. I mean, there just now should just be a big row of houses, because there's only five feet between them. But, you know, parking, you know, we're telling them to, we're going to, we're going to get rid of parking and then tell people to use transit, and, oh, by the way, we don't have transit. You know, it's just, we just, I don't see us, if I look 10 years, I don't see us having a great transit system in the city that would, that would warrant us to put in our development code to reduce parking. I just don't see it. I mean, Mr. Marriott and I have had a great conversation regards to, what'd you call them, the weekends? Gosh, you called them something. But it was, you know, somebody who will use transit when they can, but they're going to still have their car, and they're going to go up snow skiing and go up to the mountains. You can't go with those places without vehicles, so they're going to have to have a place to park them. I just, I just want us to make sure that when we go down and have all these meetings, that we're not on 11th Hour, planning commission and us come back and say, "Well, we're not reducing parking. Thank you for two years of your salary and stuff, but we're not doing that now." And I don't, I don't want us to get on the wrong foot.
Yeah.
And I'm not speaking, I'm only speaking for myself. I look to my peers, they can weigh in, but just knowing how our conversations have been, I feel comfortable that that would be one lightning rod topic.
Well, Councilman Pfeifer, to alleviate the concern there, I'm working in another jurisdiction where I just wrote up all the parking reduction stuff, and it took about a half a day. So we're looking at some things that are pretty compartmentalized. With the majority of the effort is developing parking tables and comparing them what to you have, to what you have now, and then looking at whether what you have now is working, and then taking the parking table to you, and you can say, you know, "On this particular set of entries, we disagree, and we want to change those numbers." And then we can change those numbers in real time, as we're at the meeting.
And I think there's a discussion, depending on where you're talking, like you go to Tarian Kipling, it's a sea of parking that was probably never needed. We were way too much parking. But then you go somewhere like the King Supers on 64th and Ward, and it's jam-packed. Or we turn around and tell the firehouse on Quaker and 64th that they need 35 parking spots, but there's only four of them working 24 hours a day. You know, there's just, there's just some oddities that, let's just use some common sense in some of this. And I do agree that with the shopping center areas, I do think that they will decline over time, because I do believe, I mean, now, I think I saw today, King Supers is now doing something with, you know, deliveries, and so is Walmart, and they're all competing for the Amazon model, I would say. So I can see that changing. But when it gets into human behaviors and putting some dense living around transit and thinking that would just cut back the parking requirements in half, I don't know if that's something we'd do now. And that kind of leads back to the question I was looking to read about, when is the timing of this? Because if we say, "Look, in 2025, we'll start this back up again after the next comprehensive plan," maybe society's changed, and maybe we do have a good transit system, but to wait till 2028, that might be too late, you know? And that's why I want to make sure, maybe we do have these triggers for the plans that we're all talking about, that there is at least some, this happened, this will happen. You know what I mean? The comprehensive plan finished, approved, boom, now we kick off the land development code. Boom, now we do the master plan for all these other things. So I just think we just need to be a little bit more religious about hitting those, hitting those marks.
Yeah, and that's something we could certainly do. And then keep in mind with the land development code, we have a lot more liberty to adjust as needed than we typically do in the comprehensive plan, because it's not so long-term in nature.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, two years. It must be, I think it's a heavy lift, because it's two years.
Yeah, it's a pretty big deal.
So I just want to keep that in mind, you know, when we go down this path, and really think about, we don't have a highway system yet. Bill says we will probably soon, but we really don't have a highway except for the one mile of I-70. So, you know, when you look at transit and commuting and all that, just kind of keep that in mind. Don't compare us to a city that has different luxuries that we don't have.
Councilman, you hired the right consultant, if that's what you're worried about. So I'm not boiler-plating your code, that's not going to happen. With respect to all those other issues, you know, when to adopt the regulation to deal with the future condition is, if we can adopt it today without any risk, that the market's going to deliver an utter failure, then there's no reason not to. And if we adopt it today with a risk that we're going to have spillover parking that destroys a residential neighborhood character, we don't want to do that. So we create a code that's durable enough that you can make that change in the future when that condition has arrived, and you're comfortable that you're not the first, you know, bleeding edge of it, but other people have tested it, and you think it'll work in circumstances in the city of Arvada. But, you know, one example I came up with earlier today, working in another jurisdiction, a code that somebody else wrote, should a parking structure be allowed as a freestanding use in an industrial zone? You know, one would say, why not? You know, it's industrial zone. The particular draft person in this code said, only as an accessory use to an exist, you know, another use. But, you know, someday, we may have a fleet of self-driving electric cars, and when they want to come back to charge at the end of the day, like my Roomba does, you know, what district do you want that in? So right now, today, we don't have that, but right now, today, we have zero risk that anybody would be upset about a parking structure in industrial zone, right? So we could code for that. Do we say no parking is required for single-family residential use? Not yet, not yet. So that's the kind of things we think about as we take it forward, too. What are the risks of a today error that's significant versus, you know, being adaptable for tomorrow?
John?
Yeah, just a quick one, since we're bringing up issues for you guys to maybe keep in mind as you go forward on this. The one that has struck me lately is, it seems like mostly we have TOD, or Transit-Oriented Development, defined as just proximity to a transit station. And as I've been thinking about it, it seems to me there's more to it than that, that if you're going to live a TOD lifestyle, you need more than just proximity to a transit station, you need proximity to all the other things you need in your daily life besides transit and legal services like we said the other night. So, hey, that is an essential of life. One of the essentials of life, for sure. So I, just as you go forward, I would encourage, as discussions revolve around transit-oriented development, that they're deeper than just proximity to transit stations and that they encompass more things, like I think it does in reality if you're going to actually try to live a TOD life. So that's just my input, my one point of contention there.
We are in lockstep. I'm actually, I've published in an academic journal on that item, and I've refereed an article on transit-oriented development in this region. Very familiar with the design sensibilities that should go on. Otherwise, it would be TPD, right? Transit Proximate Development? We either orient or we don't.
I also have been struggling with the TOD in our Old Town, because we have no land space to kind of, you know, it's either one or the other. And you hear about that all the time, about having a section that kind of transitions into these high-density areas, and that's not happening. The other thing that I'm thinking about, too, is looking at the values in Arvada, you know, in terms of our residents. What is it that we truly value for Arvada? And I have asked this question before, and in terms of the disabled, you know, we go by ADA. I'm not 100, you know, I'm not familiar with all of ADA's requirements, but in some cases, they may not even address needs that we have. I don't know, I'm just thinking that, we don't, I don't see that in terms of, you know, again, our value as a society or as a community here. How do we want people to be able to travel with, who have disabilities? So...
Sure. We can get to some of that. A lot of that goes into building codes, and actually, the Americans with Disabilities Act accessibility guidelines are probably just as long as your code's going to be. It's a huge document.
And I was very surprised looking at your, looking at the number of documents that were listed in your report that were actually related to urban renewal. And I know that there are other documents that we have, you know, such as the Bicycle Master Plan or the parks and all that. I would really just, I've been wanting to see a list for the longest time of the major documents that are in our, or that are referenced in our comprehensive plan. What are our visionary documents that we have in Arvada, and how does it all relate, not only to land use, but, well, I mean, that's primarily what we're doing. So how does it relate? All these documents, and where is there a list of them, so that people have a sense of where we're getting the vision for our, for our city?
So to answer that, I can't commit staff to do this, but I hope we can do this. We've got a website, AdvanceArvada.org, that launched today, and we want to have a library on there. And it would include all the stuff that we produce, but also, I would like it to include all the stuff we look at. And so that would be then, there would be a list of plans and hyperlinks to the plans that we have in electronic format, so that not only can everybody see that transparently, but when I need to reference something, I can go get it easily.
I'll just, to tell you, I've suggested that maybe the city do a meta-analysis of all these visionary documents, so we truly have an understanding of where we're trying to, where we are today, where we want to go in the future, you know, as a city. What do we really want to look like?
Right. Hey, David?
I don't know if these two things are a part of this conversation, or if they're more of the interdepartmental coordination, but as it relates to road widths within sight of a new development, and, you know, the infrastructure that's kind of supporting that, is that part of this, or is that a different conversation?
Sometimes it's part of the land development code, and sometimes it's in a separate engineering standards manual. But from the land development code perspective, we need to understand it, because it affects things like gross density and, you know, lot widths and block widths and things like that. So we will work with your public works and engineering people to figure out where that goes. And if it goes in our document, we'll put it there, and if it goes in theirs, we'll research it extensively.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? I'm afraid you lost me at thermodynamics.
Thank you for indulging us.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that, actually, Mayor Pro Tim Pfeiffer made me think about was, and you said it yourself, you know, sometimes we make a recommendation, and you guys don't follow it or consider it, or whatever you guys do.
We always consider.
But, but I've really been thinking about a concept of like an after-action report, and I don't know who would write it, but I try to watch council meetings on Monday night, but I don't always get to do that. It would be, it would be really good to know what happened, the outcome of the cases that we heard, that you heard, so that maybe we're more in line with what, what the council wants. And maybe future planning commissions could be more in line. If the council is really concerned about parking in, you know, in multifamily situations, it would be really nice for us to hear that and for you to have already had, the applicant have direction in that way, so that you're not having to turn somebody away at the last minute. And I think it's better for the applicant, probably better for Arvada to do that. But I don't know how we would accomplish that, but I think it would be very useful to see in our packets, the outcome in sort of a short write-up of what happened in, you know, of the cases that we hear.
I think staff does that every Tuesday after the Monday night meetings, where they get together, what the hell happened last night? So I think, and to the extent that staff, they could, I think that's a great idea, to be, how do, how do we get that information conveyed better to the Planning Commission? And, and then an opportunity, and that's why I think it's great that you're here tonight, and that we have some more joint meetings, that, you know, how can, how can what you learn in your process help us, says help us in our process from time to time? So. And I'm sure that's an ongoing discussion that we'll continue to have as part of this process. David, did you have something else? Okay. You bet.
So, To, so you bring that up, I mean, what challenges do you see in your role in the Planning Commission? Because sometimes I, when I read the report and stuff, it, it seems like you go down a path, you're asking the right question, I'm not saying you, I'm saying it's all of you. You're asking the right questions, we're completely aligned, and then all of a sudden, you vote yes, when you know that that might have been a no, but you were asking the right question. So where do you feel that there might be some struggles or challenges for you to get to express? Because sometimes I feel like you guys hold back, honestly, when I read the report.
I guess, speaking for, yeah, well, I hardly ever hold back. But for myself, I think, I don't, I don't feel like that the Planning Commission has as much latitude as the, as the city council. And so I know when I have questions that concern me, but I think are outside the bounds of what, where we really can have change in a, in a project, I like to ask those questions. But then, you know, we have our criteria, and our criteria is pretty tight. So my thought when I ask questions like that is to, is to give, give you guys thought. You know, I hope that, that you read the transcripts and are reading the questions that we're asking, and hearing the answers from the developer. And so if there's, in the position where you have more, maybe more latitude, it allows you to have a, an answer already from the developer before, before you're ready to ask the question.
So then the question I have for this effort, is if we're talking about streamlining and improving administrative, or whatever the suggested changes come out of the discussion, maybe we need to look at how we leverage and utilize the Planning Commission. I mean, you know, what I've gathered, what I see is, I feel they're confined to a very small box, and then they know that, well, it's just a recommendation, so I'm just going to hand it over, because maybe they feel it doesn't count, which it does, because we all read your reports. But, you know, and to me, maybe it, maybe there is something there, maybe there is some opportunity to improve the experience of that process.
Certainly is.
Yeah, okay.
We will bring you together.
I mean, I think of a recent project where we left a condition of approval that, that all of the parking be onsite. And what ended up happening was, we got a couple of more spaces onsite, and we got some off-site parking on the street.
Yeah, I voted no on that.
But, so, you know, but, but I think we ended up with a better product, because, you know, I think that...
It ended up being good, yeah.
Right. We, as a group, have seen that parking in multifamily is important to this council, and so we felt like that was an important, you know, an important point to drive forward. So I think maybe we're starting to get better, but I do, to me, it's hard to, I can't watch every, every meeting that you guys have, and I think that none of us can, because we have, we have a big enough job, I don't know how everybody else does, but it takes me four to six hours to get through my packet when it's, you know, for, for meetings in a week. If I add a three-hour council meeting to that every week, it's, it's just, it's, it's too much for me to do.
I'll be a little cynical, but I think part of the reality that we deal with is that Planning Commission can look at the comprehensive plan, the, you know, the codes and everything, and frankly, when it gets to the city council, politics enter into it. And that has ramifications. So, in terms of, of public pressure and, and those aspects. And that's, that's a balancing act, because that's part of what we're elected to look at in other parts, and I'm sure Mr. Daley from time to time goes, how the heck did they not follow the law as closely as they should have? You know, I'm sure he thinks that from time to time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I may, I think, I think we are looking at this process to address that problem.
Good.
And, and while I understand politics and things like that, and neighborhood issues kind of enter into these things, we still need, we need to try our best to factor those into the process, so that we provide a land development code update that's fair and objective to the applicant, to staff, to the Planning Commission, to the city council, to the neighborhood residents, to everyone that's affected by it. Because if we don't, if we miss this opportunity, we will pay for it in terms of development activity and, and, you know, lost economic development opportunities and other things that may come along as a result of that, because people won't want to develop here, not because they don't like it here, but because we don't have a code that's clear and applied fair and consistently. So that's what we're trying to do, is come up with that. However it looks like, however many parking requirements we have, it doesn't matter, as long as it's fair and objective, and people understand what the rules are before they even submit an application and go through the process. So, you know, that's what we're looking for Todd and staff to work on, so that we're all on the same page. And before somebody decides they're going to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop something here, they understand what those rules are before they do it. I think that's really important, you know, for all of us.
Good. Okay, you want to wrap it up?
Yeah, next step. So we're going to have homework. How's that? There's going to be a quiz. We're going to have, we're going to rank those scores, and we're going to have a ribbon for the, I'm joking, about all that. Just some things that we want you to think about. We've given you a lot of stuff to think about already. And just to echo, I think, what Mr. Devin just said, this process is going to bring, as it is tonight, the Planning Commission and the city council together, so that we can have your shared values expressed in the code. And at the end of that, if the council's comfortable enough, we would like to see some of those decisions simply delegated to the Planning Commission, so they don't have to ask what happened. You can ask what happened on your consent agenda, and say, okay, this is what they approved, are we going to pull this off the consent agenda and, you know, discuss that further, or are we just going to let it continue? That's a good way to have feedback, too, and empower the folks that you've asked to make recommendations for these years. But we want to try to figure out these areas of the city that are areas that are changing, or that should be changing, and these areas that are more stable. And so as you go around the city in your travels, before we meet next, we'll have some ideas, but we will want to get some of your perspective on that. So we just want to open up your thinking patterns to, you know, what parts of Arvada really are likely to change because of market forces, or what do we need to catalyze to change? We want to start defining compatibility, we've talked a lot about that, I think we're going to have to talk a lot about that over the next two years. We need to identify the tolerance for building height, so as you drive around, say, hey, you know, if we had a 10-story tower here with views of the mountains, would that be a huge asset to the city, or would that destroy, you know, what is the character and nature of the city of Arvada? We want to adapt to the changing interests and demographics, start to think about, you know, how has the age demographic or the, the educational demographic, or are people's kids staying in the city of Arvada? What's going on? Are you seeing younger families moving in, and neighborhoods turning over, and little kids again, and things like that? Are we promoting alternative travel modes and multimodalism? Do we have networks where people are using that? I know in some parts of the city we are, and we do, but are there other areas where we need to step that up? And then the most fun thing, everybody has a camera phone, right? So as you go around the region and the city, the good, the bad, and the ugly, you know, the old Clint Eastwood movie, we need to start thinking about, what's really great? Would we want to shoot pictures of what we want more of? What really stinks? And in particular, in Arvada, you don't have to put your names on these photos, we can filter all that off, but we need to know what we don't want to see happen again. And then, you know, what's just ugly and should have been done in a way that worked better? So those are just the things, sorts of things we want you to start thinking about, and the more pictures you can take in those three categories, the better, so that we can start to think about all of those other issues in terms of those photographs.
So do you want me to just blast the next step? Okay. So we'll meet again on December 7th, with a technical, not we, this group, but technical and advisory committees will meet on December 7th. We will then take all that information and revise the strategic assessment to incorporate some of these newer ideas and emerging topics. And then we'll meet with you as a joint group on the 22nd of January, and you will then have the opportunity to look at more than eight bullet points from the 2014, I guess it was, assessment. And then we will confirm that the council supports that approach that we're recommending there and the priorities, and that will get us off to the races. And from there, we'll do our, our, our technical and advisory committee meetings and start working through issue papers, and we'll be back to you for joint workshops along the way. So we thank you again for your time tonight, and I think that's it. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Just one question on the pictures, are you going to have a place on the website where people can do, upload photographs in those categories?
Wow, I don't know. I don't know in terms of the city's web technology for that, but also, I think we might want to take a look at that first. Whenever we're inviting somebody to upload photos, we are potentially asking for trouble. And for major offenses, even if they're not, yeah, even if they're not offensive on the face of it, you know, that's somebody's property in Arvada, so we need to be careful about how we do that, but we need to start to know. What we might end up doing, though, if we get enough pictures, is sort of allocate them ourselves based on how they came in, and say, in a survey instrument, what do you think of this picture? And let people decide for themselves how they would categorize it, and then see if it's a generally held view. We want to be as productive as possible with that kind of stuff.
Good, thank you. Thanks, everybody. There'll be some heavy lifting. Mr. Devin, anything else?
The only thing I would add, or mention to the council, is that this is our last workshop, actually, till November the 27th. We, remember, we have a October 23rd business meeting. So we're meeting, we have a business meeting on 16th, and then again on the 23rd, because of the space between business meetings, between the election, and then the swearing-in.
Good, very good. Okay, thank you all, have a good evening.